All righty. Good morning, Commissioners. And over to you, Chair Harrington.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to Tuesday, September 10, 2024, the Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair Commissioner Nefisa Fai, Commissioner Pam Tree, Commissioner Billy, and Commissioner Rogers is expected. So our first item on the agenda, we'll do board and leadership communication as the last item. Our first item is with our own Director of Assessment and Taxation, Jo Nelson, with regard to the Property Value Appeals Board. Oh, hello, Fred. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Harrington, Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jo Nelson. I'm the Director of Assessment, Taxation, Records, and Elections. And with me today is Fred Ramstead. She's the Division Manager for Cartography and Records. Today, our purpose, as you stated, is to present the candidates of the Property Value Appeals Board. To start with, I'd like to clarify the legislation from the 2023 session. House Bill 2031 renamed the Board of Property Tax Appeals to Property Value Appeals Board. And they did this with intent to match the name with the peritative action. And you so imply that you could appeal the taxes. It's actually appealing by statute, the value and the taxes are the resultant. Secondly, House Bill 2237 increased the board member term from one year to two years. Last year, we had a very successful year, and I'm really appreciative of the two remaining board members. And we have one new applicant this year for a total of three board members. The purpose of the Property Values Appeal Board is more than just weighing evidence and adjudicating values. It's an opportunity to demonstrate the transparent process, the accuracy of the tax system, and is a vital contributor to the public confidence of Washington County. An example of this is, we only had 153 appeals this last year, which is significantly down from when Measure 5 first was implemented, was 6,200 appeals. So.
And if I remember the data, you issue 200 over 220,000 property tax.
Almost 230. That's, the exact number is 229,105.
Oh, I missed that. That's a lot.
It's a lot of. Board members must be residents of Washington County who do not work for the county or any other taxing districts. It is a system of peer review, and this is a very important point. Community Engagement conducted the vacancy announcements and recruited for this board. The recruitment period ran from April 2nd, 2024 to May 15th, 2024. This year's candidates are Anthony Mills from District 1, and he's been on the board since 2012. Eric Squires from District 1, and this is his second year. And Beverly Moser from District 2, she's our new applicant this year. The next step is Board of Commissioner approval of the candidates. And this is on the board agenda for the regular session, coming October 1st. And at this point, I'm open for any questions or comments on the board.
I would like to start us off. Good morning, Commissioner Rogers. I'm all set with making the appointment, adding Ms. Moser. I'm really pleased to see that the term lengthens. But I have two comments. One is I would like us to figure out a vocabulary, and maybe we have one. I can't remember which ACA has our community engagement team to help with this across all boards and commissions. I would like us to develop a term, a label, for those committees that meet in a somewhat narrow time of year, which I believe this one does.
Yes.
So it's really a limited timeframe. But that's not a very good word, right? Or a phrase, in my opinion. So, because I think that we would benefit from having more people serving on this committee so that we have representation across all districts, as well as some business owners, chamber representatives, or whatnot. So I would, so my second, so the first need is some labels for those committees that meet year-round versus those that meet for a set time period. And the second comment I have is, I'd like to suggest we move forward with this appointment, but also keep the recruitment open with the specific purpose of looking for more applicants from. Well, it looks like we need more applicants from all districts except District 1. Does that make sense? And I think we also need to reach out to all of our chambers as well. For, for that too.
My opinion, those are very good ideas, especially given the climate that we're in right now.
Absolutely. I agree.
Any other comments? That's it? Great. Keep up the terrific work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next, we are going to dive into one of our more complex set of land use and transportation ordinances, or really, it's land use, but comes out of one joint department. So this is with regard to significant natural resources. So I just want to start by thanking you, Michelle Miller, because you've been working on this project, and maybe Teresa too, for all I know, on this project for, oh, I'd say, eight years or so. And wowee zowee is all I could say, because I met you while I was in a different elected role before joining the county commission over six years ago, and you've been at it ever since. So thank you for continuing to ensure that the county does good work in this arena. And I'm just really impressed. So anyway, I just couldn't help myself but start us off on hopefully a joyful note.
Well, thank you, Chair Harrington. We have a great team working together to really make this happen. And it is a complex problem and issue, and so we have had a lot of support. We've had support with our management staff as well, and so it's really been a department-wide project. So, good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Michelle Miller, Senior Planner. I'm here with Teresa Cherniak, Principal Community Planner. And I'm here to talk about ordinance numbers 901 and 902, their amendments to the comprehensive plan related to significant natural resources. So today's presentation will be a bit of a preview of the ordinances to come, some background to refresh your memories, and to familiarize yourself with the materials included in the ordinances. The purpose is to give you an overview of the ordinances in advance of the first hearing it's scheduled for October 1st. A bit of background on our task for updating the county's Goal 5 inventory and developing new regulations. Since the 1970s, the Foundation for the Statewide Planning, statewide program for land use planning in Oregon, has been the 19 statewide planning goals. Statewide Planning Goal 5 requires local governments to identify and protect significant natural resource areas. The procedures and requirements for complying with Goal 5 are in the Oregon Administrative Rules. The county adopted its Goal 5 program in the early 1980s and was acknowledged by the state. State law changed in 2017, expanding the requirements for land use regulations to be clear and objective to apply to housing. And the county's rules concerning natural resources were not clear and objective. And our natural resource regulations have been under scrutiny as a result. We adopted regulations in 2020 to address the state law clear and objective requirement, but those standards were appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals and remanded back to the county for further changes. In May of 2023, the Land Use Conservation and Development Commission ruled that because our natural resource regulations are not clear and objective, we were then out of compliance with Goal 5. The LCDC enforcement order directs us to make changes to our regulations and issue to stay on development that may affect properties with wildlife habitat, which is a type of county natural resource, natural resources, until we adopt new regulations. Based on the Lubbock remand and an enforcement order, the county undertook a broad review of its Goal 5 program, including its inventory, its comprehensive plan policies, and regulations. So following the Goal 5 process not only takes some time, as Chair Harrington indicated, it takes a lot of documentation, and you'll be seeing the fruits of these labor in the upcoming weeks. This table shows our projects kind of in a nutshell, and how the required pieces of the Goal 5 program fit together. On the left column are the Goal 5 process steps that we went through with this project. And the corresponding middle column shows the deliverable for each of the processes. And the column on the right shows the outcome, or where the deliverable will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan pending your approval. I'll be talking about the various deliverables in the next few slides. So first, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Draft Habitat Inventory Report. This map shows the urban unincorporated area of Washington County, with the grayish tan colors showing the incorporated or city areas, and the blue and orange encompassing the urban unincorporated area or our study area. The blue area where the bulk of our mapping and analysis was done and was part of the original inventory work that the county did in the 1980s. The orange areas are the new community plan areas where the cities may have already done their Goal 5 planning. And as a result, we've incorporated their work into this update. Our updated inventory will include two habitat types shown on this graphic. We have the riparian area, which contains the water resources and adjacent stream embankment, and the upland wildlife habitat, further upland from the riparian area. You could see the tree areas there showing the upland. This graphic shows how we took the county's inventory and Metro's Title 13 inventory to consolidate them to get our new significant natural resource categories. The column on the left are the county's current three natural resource categories from the original inventory. The middle column shows the categories of Metro's inventory, which we used in our update process. The column on the right is the resulting new county's significant natural resource categories, which will be shown on the maps as riparian wildlife habitat, which is mainly the metro riparian areas with some of the county's wildlife habitat that may have overlapped with the metro layer. The new county upland wildlife habitat is the combination of the former county wildlife habitat and the metro Class A and B wildlife habitat that were found to be significant through our methodology that was developed in the habitat report. Using the habitat methodology and the inventory, our environmental consultant refined the map to remove developed areas, properties that may have received land use approval already, and the fragmented habitat patches. And then kept the habitat that met the significance criteria. Since we filed the ordinance and mailed out notice to property owners about it, we received a small number of map changes, change requests that we are evaluating. If it's determined that a correction to the maps are necessary, we're proposing that ordinance number 901 be engrossed to make these map changes. Additional requests that may come in after August 31st and during our first year of implementation, we're considering an omnibus map amendment in late 2025. Now, I'm briefly going to talk about the Goal 5 report, which includes the Metro Title 13 compliance and the Goal 5 ESEE analysis. So the relationship between Goal 5 and Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan is a bit complex in that there are special requirements depending on whether the resources are considered regional resources or Title 13 controls compared to other resources where the local jurisdiction needs to follow the standard Goal 5 process, which means we must complete the Economic, Social, Environmental, and Energy Analysis, also known as the ESEE. This graphic shows how that relationship is discussed in the Goal 5 report that you will be receiving in the next couple of weeks. It is part Title 13 compliance, reported as regionally significant resources, namely those riparian wildlife habitat resources for the urban unincorporated area, and part ESEE analysis for those resources that aren't considered Title 13 resources, mainly the upland wildlife habitat that has come into the urban growth boundary before 2006. Coming out of the Goal 5 report and the ESEE was a recommendation to lightly limit conflicting uses in the upland wildlife habitat, carrying forward these principles that we've incorporated into our policies and also our code amendments. Prioritizing mature native trees and large habitat patches that are closer to the water. When the impacts cannot be avoided, disturbance areas should be cited to protect trees with the highest ecosystems value. Provide a clear and objective path for mitigation, and then flexibility to allow for different site conditions depending on the constraints of individual sites. And support the clustering of residential development away from the resources to balance our housing needs while protecting the resources. Next, we turn to our ordinance number 901, which contains amendments to the comprehensive framework plan and each of the community plans. The CFP updates include incorporating the recommendations in the ESEE into the policy, the Significant Natural Resource Policy, which is Policy 10, and changes to Policy 41, the Significant Natural Resources Map for Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Areas. In each of the community plans, design elements, we made changes that removed design elements that no longer apply or were subjective. We clarified that other Goal 5 design elements to specify that they are policy guidance rather than development requirements. And then we added a summary of the work that we've been doing. And we amended the Significant Natural and Cultural Resources Maps to reflect the changes that we've done through our updates to our inventory.
Could you give us a feel for how many community plans you needed to update? Or were they just?
We had to update, I believe it was 13, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, so it's all of them. And.
I lost sight of how many of them there were. So, thank you very much.
Well, here's an example of the community map plane, map plane changes with the example of the Bethany Community Plan incorporated in the changes to the new Significant Natural Resource Categories for riparian and upland wildlife habitat. Now, I'm going to speak to ordinance number 902, Amendments to the Community Development Code. Riparian wildlife habitat and mapped upland wildlife habitat have different development standards based on the different levels of habitat protection. Maintenance and repair of structures within existing building footprint and removal of certain trees, such as those that are hazardous, diseased, or dying, are exempt from both habitat types. Exemptions from the requirements for upland wildlife habitat include construction, maintenance, and repair of public park projects, transportation facilities, utilities, and mineral extractions. We also exempted small lots and lots with a very small amount of upland wildlife habitat that didn't contain any riparian habitat. Turning to the riparian wildlife habitat standards, they're similar to what we have currently. Development is still allowed, is strictly to moderately limited, but some development activity is allowed. If a development impacts riparian wildlife habitat, clean water services requirements will likely apply. Only the following activities are allowed in the riparian wildlife habitat: public transportation facilities and utilities, wildlife viewing areas or things like trails, restoration work, and at least one dwelling unit or a middle housing duplex. Even though these activities may be allowed, it doesn't mean that they're not regulated. There are state and local requirements like Clean Water Services requirements or Department of State lands permitting. So our proposed regulations for the upland wildlife habitat will not change our currently allowed uses. Development is still allowed. It focuses on tree retention or replacement. We provide a clear and objective path that includes a tree inventory, assessment of tree points, and tree retention and planting requirements. And then we have two alternative discretionary paths to attain the, that obtain the level of tree habitat protection that's identified in the ESEE analysis. And we provide a greater degree of protection for upland wildlife habitat that's within areas that have been added to the urban growth boundary after 2005, which is a compliance requirement of Title 13.
Before you move on, I want to make sure we're all clear on some of these terms. Given that the reason this has been remanded for clear and objective standards, when you use this phrase, two alternative discretionary paths, where the, how does that relate to having clear and objective? Is it discretionary for use by, yeah, that word discretionary threw me for a loop.
Sure. So one of the things about some of these sites, it's really, we had kind of case-by-case review of the, of the site plans. But the rules, as you noted, we need to have clear and, a clear and objective path, meaning this is one path a developer can take when he looks at the site. So we've, we've got our clear and objective path. And the Oregon Administrative Rules in Division 23 allow you to have discretionary path, but you need to make sure it's still compliant with the, what you've outlined as your program decision in the ESEE analysis. So it has, has to kind of.
Yep.
Be related.
Yep.
And the applicant or developer can take one of those two alternative, alternative paths at their choosing. So then it's allowed to be discretionary.
Now I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. So to update you on where we are in the process, we've just held the last of three hearings with our planning commission, and they considered our ordinances. At the last meeting, which was September 4th, the planning commission recommended approval of ordinance number 901 and 902 with some recommendations to the board for engrossment. Staff is also planning to recommend approval of the ordinances with engrossment with the map changes we talked about earlier and other refinements to the code language. We're busy working on those right now, and those will be presented in the staff report and at the board's hearing on October 1st.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
Staff also plans to recommend with engrossment to include, and other possible refinements to the code language. I'm, want to make sure I don't understand the scope of that because the planning commission has, you've been taking all of this to the planning commission. So I don't know if those possible refinements are based off of their feedback. Or what I want to avoid is that those refinements include something that haven't gone through their lens, or that they haven't discussed.
It's primarily based on their feedback.
Great.
And then we have, we've had a few very, very minor, non-substantive things that our current planning staff has, has kind of caught. And so we're, we're making nothing substantive.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that was all clear to us, what some of the nuances here before we get to the full Q and A. Thank you. Thank you for bearing with these clarifying questions along the way.
Oh, I appreciate them, Chair Harrington. So here's the upcoming board hearings with the actions the board could take and the two alternatives depending on the hearing on October 1st. Alternative 1 is if the board is ready to order engrossment on the 1st. And alternative 2 is if you'd like to continue the hearing to October 15th. You may recall that the enforcement order and the stay indicated that we had until October 1st to adopt new standards, and the stay will remain in place until these standards are adopted. We've had a very tight schedule for adoption of the ordinances, knowing that the stay is in place. We've had contact with the Department of Land Conservation and Development and to let them know of our status. And they are, they don't object to our process taking a little bit more, more time and understand our engrossment process that we have to go through.
So. The difference then between alternative 1 and alternative 2 is that if we want, alternative 2 is that allowing an additional hearing on the engrossed?
Do you want to go ahead, Teresa?
Well, alternative 2 is just, I think, if the board on October 1st doesn't feel comfortable yet with making a recommendation. If you had more questions or wanted us to bring something back to, to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then we would do that, but it wouldn't be on the engrossed ordinance. That has to happen. We'll, we'll refile the ordinances based on what the board directs. And then under the charter, you'll have those two additional hearings.
Okay. All right, I'm clear on that. Is everybody else clear on that? Alternative 1 versus alternative 2?
I have one minor clarification.
Is it on, is it on this?
Yes.
Okay, great.
The, your recommendation on alternative 1 versus alternative 2, did you put that there because you anticipate a lot of feedback and community coming out to either testify or?
We, we have had some testimony, not, I would say, not a lot. But yes, we would anticipate that the board will hear from a number of community members. But this is, this is also just to, I guess, we will make a recommendation on October 1st for engrossment, but it's, it's whether the board is comfortable with that yet, or we will probably have a couple of options that we would offer for how to address some of the things that the planning commission had recommended. So it's, it's really whether you still have questions about it.
Standard for them to bring us. We think this is ready. Here's the path for that. But Commissioners, you're the decision maker. So they always bring us to options. With this, one of the options being, if you need more time for consideration.
Yeah, thank you. I, I wanted to understand more. If we are anticipating a greater turnout from the community, then I will lean towards option 2 so that we have more time. But, so thank you for that indulgence.
And it would be the kind of thing that you could, you would decide on the 1st, based on how, how that goes, whether you feel you need more time or you're ready at that time.
So today is just really not, it doesn't matter.
Okay, just letting you know that we've, we've anticipated these, and this is how they would play out.
Okay, thank you.
So if anyone has any other questions or comments in advance of the first hearing, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
I have some questions, but I don't know if that's...
Go for it.
Commissioner Rogers?
Good. It seems like deja vu. We keep dealing with these issues. We dealt with them a long time. I'm particularly pleased that we're somehow coming into unity with the metro maps because that takes a lot of confusion away. My two questions. I know you've done a ton of work. It's a lot of hard... It's very hard stuff. From the... Those who are developing, development community, it's setback issues. Is there any changes? Because obviously, with the tight urban growth boundary, you have limited amounts of land. So anytime we put big setbacks in addition to containing the number of developed lands, property, there's a problem. People are going to say it's a taking. They're going to say they got a problem. They can't develop. So is there, in your minds, any of this new mapping? Any of this new analysis? Any issues with the setbacks? That's a question.
So we did hear from the development community and they are... They shared that concern you said about the small infill projects being a challenge to develop. And so we're looking at making some adjustments there for those type of properties. Also, we have an actual adjustment process from the design standards that developers can take, can look at to see whether some of those setbacks could be adjusted to shift, to reduce for fitting more trees on the lot or to adjust the lot size. And then our clear and objective path does not put trees in a tract. It is trees that will remain on the private property. So there's no issues with setbacks there. We also have, we heard from property owners that... Individual property owners that were concerned about maybe some trees on their property that they wanted to take care of and maintain. So we're allowing a certain amount of area around the buildings where applicants could take out trees at will, depending on their needs, and then around different perimeters of the buildings on different sites. And the upland habitat regulations, at this time, only apply to... If they have upland habitat, only apply to properties that are over a half acre in size.
Thank you. I think you answered that. But it's, I guess it's clear and objectives in the eyes of the holder, kind of like in the tax business. It's reasonable. Is it reasonable? And what's reasonable? You know, and clear, what's clear, what's objective? So I appreciate your efforts. I think it's the topography and way things change and riverbanks change, all kinds of things change. It's going to be a big struggle for this board as well as all of you in the future. My second question is on utilities. And that includes transportation projects. There are exceptions, I understand. I don't know the extent of the exceptions for utilities or for road projects. And let me give you an example on the utility side. Going from point A to point B, that you need a transmission line on a sewer, for instance. I get that. And I think anybody say, "Okay." How about our water retention basin? How about, you know, other kinds of amenities that might need to be there? A pump station. I mean, who knows? So I don't know whether we have exceptions for that. On the roadside, we might all argue. And we saw that down in District 3 in regard to a lot of arguments regarding tile flat extension. What needs to be done, what can be done? And probably good versus maybe more localized interests. Or do you think... And I guess this is a crystal ball, so I apologize. But do you think that you're clear objective in terms of utilities? Like I've described, you know, the pump stations, the retention basins, if those are okay? And if we're okay? And then on the road projects, if this board has sufficient flexibility, if they can cite projects? Or will that still be tied up because we're not clear and objective?
Sure. Well, we're taking a careful look at our language. And you might have noticed that we had an exemption for utilities and how that kind of specific language is included in the code. The code standard, I can read it to you, what we have currently. It's an exemption for installation, maintenance, or construction of the following utilities: sanitary and storm sewer and water lines, electric communications and signal lines, and gas distribution and transmission lines. But we'll take a careful look at that pump station issue. And...
I wonder if somebody might want to comment. But I specifically picked on water retention basins and I specifically picked on pump stations because that's not, I think, specified. But you can look at that later.
Okay, thank you. And regarding upland, I mean, regarding riparian wildlife habitat, that's an allowed use, but it's also one of those exceptions that's included in our standards.
And on the road issue?
Mm-hmm. For the road as well. For roads as well.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks.
Other commissioners, go ahead. Commissioner Teresa?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Rogers. And I just wanted to, for the record, let my fellow commissioners know I sat in on the PC, on the planning commission discussion on this last week. And it was, to your point, they really focused a lot of time on the exemptions. There was a lot of discussion. They focused around the parks. And I have a great deal of respect for the planning commission and the way they went about expressing their concerns, talking with one another, but really talking to both of you about their questions. And I just wanted to, from my perspective, I was really pleased with the interaction on the planning mission. But those exemptions were a big part of that focus.
Which begs the question... Does today's presentation and/or your presentation on October 1st, will that make... Will you be providing a short but comprehensive, beginning with a clear but comprehensive list of the variety of exemptions with a key message of where to find those exemptions within the actual ordinance documentation? Because what this board doesn't want to have to deal with is a public hearing where people just raise questions. Well, what about my property that has X, Y, Z? Those properties should already be taken care of. People have to read the actual documentation, right?
And we have done that extensively also in the planning commission. We had three reports for the three meetings. And there's a lot of background. We answered a lot of the community's questions in there pretty specifically. So we'll do that in the board staff report. It's going to be a long staff report. So we will have a table of contents. So you'll be able to look through it and the pieces that you'd like. But we do...
Well, I expect to see the word exemption right as a first word on one of them. So to get people's attention. What some of us have had the... Pleasure, I use in air quotes, of dealing with is others leveraging fear. You know, I can imagine in form, email going out. If you have a tree on your property, you need to show up at the Board of Commissioners meeting on October 1st on these ordinances. And it's like, that is so off-base. So let's make the presentation clear. So, anyway, thank you. That was all based off of Commissioner Teresa's comment.
No, I don't have any questions on this. We've gone through this a lot. I appreciate your long-term work on this. So thank you, and hopefully we'll get it across to finish time.
Commissioner Feig?
I do have a number of questions. I did email just now to Brenda to schedule a briefing. More specifically, a letter of testimony that came in from Fran Warren. I'd like to go over some of those key pieces that she called out. But with this presentation, besides that briefing, just for my own out-of-occasions here, the slide number 21, where you have proposed... And then I do have a couple of questions, minor questions from the previous slides. But the proposed regulations include the alternative discretionary path. Do they all lead... Do those paths lead to the desired outcome? Or is there one that outweighs the other? What is the impact of the two paths?
Well, the one alternative is a little more simple. It's a 30% retention area of the significant habitat that's remaining on the site. So set aside and attract. And that needs to balance with the clear and objective path. And then there's a third path that is for an environmental report where they would describe the habitat and go into depth about what the mitigation plan would be for that particular site. And that's very discretionary and it would rely on the expertise of the consultant applicant. And so it would be a rigorous review of that process and it would need to match that 30% tree retention or the clear and objective path, all kind of balanced of what was found in the E S E E to lightly limit upland habitat.
So there are three paths. Sorry. There are three paths. Is the property owner deciding if they want to choose the clear and objective path or one of the two alternative paths?
That's correct, your hearing too.
Thank you.
And the land use conservation strategies, how does that align with...
That's at the, I think you're talking about at the state level.
Okay.
And we've worked closely with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And they served on the Technical Advisory Committee. And those conservation areas were evaluated by our environmental consultant while looking at the habitat that we have inventoried already, the metro and the county habitat inventory, and looked at the scale of where those conservation areas are in the assessment of whether to keep a particular habitat patch or not. So kind of to help make that decision for whether the habitat would remain or would be considered significant on the inventory. Frankly, our environmental consultant found that that wildlife habitat corridor was at a scale that was so much wider than what an urban environment habitat allows for. So there are these wide swaths that go over houses and different things like that. So it was really a challenge to compare that when looking at the refinement that's in our inventory currently.
And then the first two slides are... Just the education ones, the county, metro, and the new S and R categories.
Oh, sure. Pull that one up.
Just my own thinking. The colors on that slide, being the blue and the green, do they have any significance on this?
Right. So when you look at our county, our original county categories, we had two categories for the water areas. There were the water areas and the wetlands. And then the water areas and wetlands that also contain fish and wildlife habitat. And those were in a lighter shade. So we've kind of represented the colors from the original GOL 5 inventory that we did in the 1980s. And then wildlife habitat is a green color. Not, doesn't quite match the color shade, but it's close. So it represents kind of riparian blue and upland wildlife habitat and green.
Habitat without having water.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's what I was wondering. And thank you for... There was a reason why I asked the colors. But in the first one, you have water areas and wetlands and fish. And then you have wildlife habitat. And then in the green, there's wildlife habitat. What, how do you dissect that?
Sure. That's kind of one of the problems with our GOL 5 inventory. We had water areas. And then they had areas, oh, there's water areas that also have fish and wildlife habitat. And then there was this other kind of category that was wildlife habitat. Maybe they didn't know if there was water areas there. And that's why... Or they were forested area habitat patches, standalone patches. And so they were called wildlife habitat. So it was at a time in the 1980s when they had limited information about topography or even GIS. So it kind of creates some confusion in our inventory. And then later, we had the metro categories. So all of that was combined. And now, to clarify, we'll be having these more certain categories.
Can you go back one slide to the picture, the image? This might help too. So the riparian area is the area where that bottom part with the water in it, that's the water area. That's where the water is flowing. It's a channel. There may be fish there, but not maybe a lot of other animals. The area up from that a little bit, the soil may still be saturated with water. It may flood, so the water will go up. This is the area that Clean Water Services was primarily interested in and concerned about. That ends up being their vegetated corridor. So wildlife do use that and flow through it. But it's also a primary water area. Up from that, animals will... Birds will be in the trees. The animals will be using the ground more. So it's different kinds of wildlife, probably in the different areas. And the other distinction is that whether there's water present or the soils are water-saturated, that kind of thing in the riparian area.
All right, I'll finish.
Can I ask one quick question?
Of course.
Lisa, you referred to the letter from Fran Warren. Was that to you? Or, because I don't recall seeing that letter, but maybe I probably missed it.
I'll forward it. I'm not sure who it was CC'd, but it did come to my email. And I'll certainly forward to the whole board.
Yes. So constituent emails that come in to individual commissioners, either directly or through the form, need to be supplied to Mary for distribution in the constituent report.
Yes. Well, I was wondering if I missed that in that. So yeah, if you could do that, that would be great.
Certainly.
And we do have several letters from Ms. Warren that will be included in the packet with the testimony.
Yeah. Oh, that's right. Yeah, there's a few questions that didn't have to do with my own prep work here that I want to indulge on your brains.
Thank you very much for today's presentation. I have a few comments. The Committee for Community Involvement has had an S and R subcommittee for years. And you talked about receipt... The presentation here and material talked about receipt of information through the planning commission process and whatnot. So I would appreciate in your packet if you would note the most recent date by which you have received and processed communication from that subcommittee, okay? And my particular reason for noting this is this project has been going on for a vast number of years before the four of us were even on the commission. And your material today talked about this work being very...
Uh, and your material today talked about this work being very um, dedicated, uh, or one of your areas of focus since at least twenty seventeen. So irrespective of the possibilities of appeals to these specific ordinances, I would like your work to be done this year. Um, so what I'm looking out for is analysis paralysis, right? I believe that the process that you've laid out and the content of the ordinance and having these multiple paths, for example, uh, brings the project to completion. Um, additionally for uh, having the uh, latest uh, proposals for these ordinances coming on October first and having the associated staff report on that and the public hearing. Uh, I'm going to be turning to you after all of that and asking you the question. Have we heard any public testimony today that provides for considerations that are new and not accommodated through the specific ordinance? We can receive comments we've not necessarily heard before from someone with slight, with different wording. But if it still is accommodated, the case that they're illustrating for maybe their specific property is accommodated by the proposed ordinances, then I don't see any reason why we should hold up. Um, so heads up on that. Uh, then I have a question on slide eleven. Didn't write my numbers large enough. Yes, um, where in the last sentence, to address possible requests received between August thirty-one and the first year of implementation, staff will propose an omnibus map, emphasis on map correction ordinance in late twenty twenty-five. Um, so uh, this, is this this goes back to, for example, the only illustrative map in the packet that I recall is this one. That's on slide eight, I think.
Oh, mhm, well, we have the um, the community plan maps is what the maps would be.
Okay.
Would be, if there are any changes.
No, I get that. I, what I'm trying to differentiate and make sure is clear, this is not countywide, okay? These ordinances apply to these colored areas, okay? So it's two, I think, uh, uh, it would help, in my opinion, the presentation if the presentation lists out the thirteen community plans and make sure this map is in there, okay? Because if someone comes and testifies about their property that's in the gray area, well, this doesn't apply. We need to make it easier for people to see where it applies and where it doesn't apply. Okay, and I know, because we've been on this journey with you, that with this Ben, with this diagram, it's an even narrower set. So um, it's important, and we're doing this work, but it applies to a, a narrow set of lands. So, or, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Um, ba-bum. Yep, I made all my comments, I'm ready to get this thing done. I, I have a clarifying question for you, Chair. Okay. You said, uh, to get this work done by the end of this year. Your, the alternative that you presented ends in November. Were you thinking sooner than November?
November is this year.
Yeah, so that's, we're, we're on the same. That, I'm asking if you were recommending something different than what they had.
No.
God. Cause I heard you say that.
This year.
This year.
This year.
You're in agreement with them.
I think she's gonna, it was on calendar versus fiscal year. No, we're not necessarily. Year, and I think, I think Navisa's just confused with the term by the end of the year versus this year, and I think that's, we're talking about this year. This. Alternative one and alternative two, and you're not modi- you're not suggesting anything different.
No, and I don't understand why anybody would be confused about that.
Yeah, so, just clarifying.
What I, what I heard you say is, I want to make sure you finished this work by the end of this year. What I saw was November of this year. I was asking if you were suggesting something different, but it sounds like this year.
No, okay, we're hopeful.
Yep.
We're, all right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Good job.
So um, next we're going to go into another long topic, which is the U G R discussion. Da-da-da-don, let's go. On big topic over.
Pick up your whole morning here with L U T topics.
Why not?
Why not?
There's a lot going on.
Usually we get the afternoon, so this is great, actually. So, good morning, Commissioners, um, I'm Stephen Roberts, Land, Use and Transportation Director. With me is Erin Wardell, our Assistant Director and still Acting Planning and Development Services Manager. Um, so we wanna just give you a brief status update on the status of the um, Metro Urban Growth Management Process. Um, you'll recall that Metro released the urban, the draft urban growth report, U G R, uh, back in July and opened it up for public comment for about forty-five days. And just a day or two after the comment period ended, the Metro COO issued the Metro Staff Recommendation for Metro Council's consideration uh, of the proposed request to expand the U G B for um, Sherwood West. Uh, which is just about almost thirteen hundred acres on the western edge of Sherwood. So uh, there are a couple of upcoming meetings, we'll run through those as a part of the presentation, but in particular, Impact meets tomorrow night. And uh, they'll discuss this uh, draft um, COO recommendation. And then they'll be meeting again on September twenty-fifth for a decision or a recommendation, a decision on a recommendation from Impact to Metro Council.
One's very insignificant perhaps correction is that the report is going to be presented, first of all, by Metro staff to Impact, and then there'll be the discussion. So if there's any, any nuances, we should learn about those as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Point of clarification. Um, isn't the Metro Council required to adopt the urban growth report by the end of twenty twenty-four? And then they have within some set period to complete any potential U G B decision?
My understanding, you, you would know better than I, but yeah, my understanding is their intent is to try to wrap both up by the end of the year.
Yes, that is, is definitely the council's goal, but by the requirements.
Okay.
They simply need to adopt the urban growth report by the end of this year. And then have their intent to, by what timeframe? Within the requirements, they will make any subsequent decision related to that.
Thank you.
They're, so they're not required, if the ur- adoption of the urban growth report says that they need to expand, they're not required to expand it within the six-year timeframe. I believe they have at least another eighteen months to do so.
Okay, I learned something new today.
Who wants to? I'm not a lawyer, okay? But um, that is my understanding of facts.
Careful of nodding your head there, Courtney.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. All right, so uh, and so part of our purpose here today really is to give your board again the update, but also to provide a forum for some discussion around some of the issues that may arise relative to the consideration of this U G R uh, or the U G B expansion proposal. And to ultimately provide any board direction or guidance to your Impact rep, Commissioner Teresa. And Commissioner, do you wanna add anything before we jump in?
No, I just appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion, thank you, and thanks in advance to my fellow Commissioners for the discussion.
Great.
You're very welcome. Yeah, one, one quick thing, I just wanna point out that tomorrow's meeting is online. And then the uh, the time that we vote is in person, just for information.
Okay, well, and I've, I think I've sort of covered this slide already here. Um, so we do have a few disgusting questions for your board. And they are these, do you have any proposed conditions of approval for Impact and Metro Council consideration? Do you, as a board, support the Metro COO and staff recommendation of the baseline growth forecast? Or would you recommend that Impact discuss supporting a higher growth rate? And then do you have any other questions or concerns for discussion? And at this point, I'm gonna pass to Erin, and she's gonna walk us through the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Stephen. So um, some background on why we do this. The Oregon law requires that cities and metro areas within the state maintain an urban growth boundary. For the Portland metro area, Metro maintains our urban growth boundary, which includes parts of three counties and I believe twenty-four cities. It's a large urban growth boundary, and there's a lot that's happening within there. Metro's required to reevaluate the urban growth boundary every six years. So within that six-year urban growth management cycle, there's a variety of um, compliance and technical analysis pieces that happen. And it all culminates with the adoption of the urban growth report at the end of the six-year period. When Metro calculates the need and evaluates the urban growth boundary, they're required to use a twenty-year population and employment forecast as a part of calculating the need for both population and employment land. And if they determine there is a need, they can choose to expand the urban growth boundary in order to accommodate that need. They could also choose to take other measures in order to accommodate that need within the existing urban growth boundary. The most recent on-cycle urban growth report and corresponding urban growth boundary expansion happened in twenty eighteen. And in twenty eighteen, it was a fairly large U G B expansion. The cities of Hillsborough, Beaverton, King City and Wilsonville all requested area to be added to the urban growth boundary and were approved to do that. All of those areas are undergoing their comprehensive planning processes and moving into development now. Metro's rules also do allow for what's called a mid-cycle U G B evaluation. And the mid-cycle is a little bit new, I believe it was used for the first time in twenty twenty-one. Um, I think that process was possible to use earlier, but that was the first time that it was utilized. In twenty twenty-one, the city of Tigard asked for an urban growth boundary expansion for the River Terrace two-point-oh area. Metro conducted a very careful and thoughtful analysis of that and determined that rather than doing an urban growth boundary expansion, they would do an urban growth boundary land swap. This is something that's allowed for in state statute, but that was the first time that Metro had opted for a land exchange rather than an expansion. So twenty twenty-four is again back on cycle for a regular urban growth management decision and possible U G B expansion. So we're gonna go into the wayback machine now, back to the nineties, when Metro undertook an extensive, many-years-long process to prepare the twenty forty growth concept. At that time, it was intended to be a fifty-year look at what our region needed to do and needed to be as it grew up and where we wanted to see growth, where we wanted to see communities and employment land, and how we were going to build a transportation system that served all of those various areas. This was, at the time, very innovative work. It was studied all around the country and the world as how a regional government could conduct very comprehensive land use and transportation planning. And all of the policies adopted at that time encourage all of the great things listed on this slide. Housing available at all income levels, complete communities, quality transportation system, and protection of the rural areas outside of the urban growth boundary. Once Metro adopted the twenty forty growth concept in the mid-nineties, all of the local jurisdictions updated their comprehensive plans to meet the requirements of the twenty forty growth concept. All of our plans are consistent with this vision. This is what that twenty forty growth concept map looks like, I know you're all familiar with it. Um, what's interesting, I think, to look at is that you can really see our urban cores and the pink colors. That's the regional and town centers, pinks and purples, and you can see our major transportation corridors connecting that. And if you think about what the region looked like in nineteen ninety-five versus today, you know that there's been a huge amount of realization and implementation of this vision as we move forward. Uh, we'll have another map later that shows the urban reserve areas that are possible for U G B expansion. They're on this map, they're hard to see though, they're in kind of that tan color. So we'll move forward now to twenty ten, and actually it started a few years sooner than that. But Metro worked with the three counties and other partners to jointly designate our fifty-year supply of urban reserves and rural reserves. The purpose of doing that analysis was to determine with certainty the areas where the urban growth boundary could be expanded and areas where it could not be expanded. And so that went through years of legal challenge and was finally settled for Washington County in twenty fourteen with the legislative fix of H B forty seventy-eight. Um, and so that decision set our urban reserves, they are contiguous to our urban growth boundary. Those are the areas that can be asked for as a part of urban growth boundary expansions. Similarly, in the same, about the same timeframe, Washington County convened the Urbanization Forum, again, with many of our partners within the county and with Metro. And at that time, a decision was entered, or an agreement was entered into that from that point forward, only cities would initiate and manage urban growth boundary expansion requests, which meant that Bonnie Slope West and North Bethany would be the last urban growth boundary expansion areas that Washington County would plan and implement as a county.
Metro adopted that policy uh, before the forum was over. Uh, and applied the policy, proposed the policy across the whole region, and that policy was formally adopted and uh, put into Metro code.
Mhm, and the county signed on to it as well, so we're all partners in this agreement.
But I don't think we have it in our code.
I do not believe it's adopted into our comprehensive, and I think you're correct, yes.
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
There's a signature.
Yeah, there's a resolution that implements that um, Urbanization Forum outcome, yeah.
This board hasn't seen that.
And we can share that document with you for for your information. So now we're back caught up with modern times, we're in twenty twenty-four again. And so Metro initiated the urban growth management decision, urban growth report process about a year ago. And so Metro Council will now, as the Chair clarified earlier, take action on the urban growth report and intends to take action on a U G B expansion decision by the end of the year. As a part of the process, again, going back to the Urbanization Forum and some of the agreements and changes Metro's made to their process, cities have to ask and show that they have considered land readiness and they have prepared a concept plan for an area in order to ask for an urban growth boundary expansion. As a part of this decision, the city of Sherwood was the only city that requested an urban growth boundary expansion. Sherwood spent a number of years studying the almost thirteen hundred acre Sherwood West urban reserve area and preparing a concept plan for that. So Metro Council, Impact, and your board have all been briefed by Sherwood staff and electeds on their proposal and have also been briefed on the urban growth management decision process. So this map shows our urban and rural reserves around the entire metro region. So you can see the Sherwood West area highlighted there in blue. Um, there are urban reserve areas around Washington County and Clackamas County and Montnomah County. And so we're not the only one that has urban reserves, but again, city of Sherwood is the only one that asked for an urban growth boundary expansion at this time. So your board, after receiving your briefing from city of Sherwood officials on July sixteenth, did prepare a letter of support for Sherwood's proposal. The key elements of your support letter were supportive of the work that they've done to prepare their concept plan and make the request to Metro Council for the expansion. Your board also encouraged Metro Council to consider selecting a higher growth rate for both population and employment with the intent that it's better to be prepared for high growth in case that happens, rather than being unprepared if it comes to pass. So as Stephen said, we received the Metro um, Growth Management Decision Chief Operating Officer and Staff Recommendations on August twenty-sixth. The key elements of this decision were to recommend that Metro Council should adopt the baseline forecast. Metro prepares three different forecasts. Metro prepares three different forecasts for population and employment growth. There's the low growth, the baseline, and then the high growth baseline's in the middle. And so the Metro staff and COO recommendation says, pick the middle, the baseline for both housing and employment growth. The recommendation does recommend expanding the urban growth boundary to include the entire Sherwood West concept area, urban reserve area. The recommendation says that the housing need can be met by Sherwood's expansion and that the, the capacity available in Sherwood West supports what we need in order to grow the region. And that the Sherwood West industrial land addition is also warranted because while there's a lot of industrial land available around the region, much of that land is constrained, or it's heavily parcellized, or it has steep slopes. And therefore, it's not well-suited to the types of employment that we'd like to see in the region. Whereas the Sherwood West area has some large lot flat sites that can easily be consolidated or are already consolidated. The COO recommendation also contains potential conditions of approval for Metro Council to consider as a part of their decision. It is typical for Metro Council to apply conditions to the cities that receive UGB expansions. You may recall this happened in 2018 with the four cities that received expansions at that time. There were four topic areas proposed in the decision. Mix of housing types, meaning higher densities, housing affordability requirements, industrial site protections. So that means preserving that possibility for large lot industrial sites and then an inclusive community engagement strategy. So these are all just potential topic areas. It doesn't necessarily propose what those conditions could be, and that's going to be a part of our conversation. So this slide summarizes some of the initial feedback that we've heard to the COO recommendation. There are some.
Could I, could I stop you for clarification on the four areas there? Previously, have you seen the, how the density numbers be in these conditions brought forward? And I'm asking, is this an unusual situation to have it be so vague at this point?
I don't think it's unusual for it to be vague at this point. I'm not entirely sure if the 2018 conditions included specific density requirements. I know that they did include other pretty specific requirements for how comprehensive planning needed to occur, infrastructure analysis and things like that. I'll look over my shoulder, Jessica.
We need you to come to the mic.
Jessica said she's looking right now, and so we will clarify if we find previous density requirements. And so I think what Commissioner Teresa is asking, one of the things that's been floated around is that Sherwood West Concept Plan showed a possible range of housing units from, I think, nine to 16 units per acre, somewhere in there. And so it's been floated around that Metro Council could require Sherwood to show 20 units per acre or 18 units per acre or something like that. And so there's some concern about.
Developable acre.
Yes, yes. And so there's some concern about the compliance with that and whether or not that still meets what Sherwood had planned for their community through their process.
Thank you. That's what I was, but I have a clarifying question on this before we get into subsequent slides. This county has been through UGB, UGR and UGB cycles before. And I certainly was as a Metro counselor. But I'm trying to make sure I note what is different in this cycle. So the mix of housing types with regard to density, the density part overall is not new to me. But the housing affordability requirements, I think are new, but I need to confirm that.
I, I agree. I think that there are some ideas floated around about housing affordability requirements, which would require, for example, something like a certain percentage of units to be regulated affordable housing, affordable at certain income levels. We have not previously seen a condition like that applied to a UGB expansion. And I think there's some concerns again about the compliance aspect of that and how that could be implemented by the city.
So that's on number two. But back on number one, another thing that has changed since the last UGR, which was 20, well, the full UGR was 2018.
Yes.
And that, there were, there were UGB expansions then the end of 2018. Because I was very busy finishing that work and the RTP adoption by the end of 2018. Middle, the middle housing legislation is another piece that is new since 2018. So statewide, there are requirements that enable middle housing. But in the metro region, and therefore in us as a county, there are requirements to allow for all four types of middle housing that are not required elsewhere in the state. So I don't know, for me, number one is overall density requirements are similar. But number one is different from the standpoint of this is the first UGR slash UGB decision that is applying middle housing. So that's an, another, for me, a whole new element of experience with this UGR, UGB cycle. You with me, Commissioner Willie? Okay, because I know you've been through this process too.
And on the question of density as well, there's, I shouldn't say always, but for many decades, there's been a state requirement that on an overall citywide or county-wide basis, you are meeting a certain density for housing targets. So Washington County has one.
Housing.
Metropolitan housing rule, exactly. And so we've always had a density requirement, but that number is lower than what we've seen floated around as a possible density requirement for Sherwood West. And so that's another piece of this. Sherwood's had a rule that they've tried to meet for their entire city for a number of years, and they're hearing a number much higher than that.
Yep. So it's, for a long time, we were required as a region and a county to have type, multiple types of housing to satisfy the metropolitan housing rule. So it couldn't all be single-family units, SFUs. But middle housing has gotten much clearer. It's not just multifamily housing or attached housing as it was before. It's now clearer around duplexes, quadplexes. So that's a whole new part that we're experiencing together. And thank you for bringing that up. And also, that middle housing piece also has driven the confusion, I believe, around what the density numbers in fact mean. So that's what's important for all of us to understand as well. And this, I anticipate, is going to be a big part of the discussion tomorrow night. So I'm just putting that out on the table.
Yeah, it throws a lot of complexity into our typical calculations. It used to be really straightforward to calculate density, but if now you could put up to four units on any single-family lot, it makes it hard to do the numbers.
Well, and it's also developer-dependent.
Yes.
So that adds to the, the fact that we don't know.
There's a difference between what you plan for and what actually gets implemented. There's a lot of uncertainty there, which is why I think people are concerned about the compliance on this. What happens if Sherwood plans for the best, but that's not what's delivered? And so it, yeah, it's complicated.
Yes, but, and it's important that we all understand that.
And I might add, if you'll, if you recall, and I, I just realized we didn't include a copy of the Sherwood West Concept Plan in the packet here. But back when the city made their presentation to your board, they specifically called out that they had identified specific portions of the community plan area where middle housing would be specifically allowed and encouraged and other areas that were intended ideally to remain more traditional, single-family.
But, okay, I think we need to step back for a second and confirm our language. Encouraged, I agree with. Allowed? Middle housing is allowed everywhere that a single-family housing unit is.
Correct.
Allowed. So I needed your articulation to say specifically enabled versus allowed, because it's allowed everywhere that a house is allowed.
Encouraged versus.
Encouraged. So, but they, I'm fine with them saying, you know, this is a great part of the community where we really hope that it'll be. So, yeah. This is all bloody new.
It is. And there's a lot of questions out there, so.
Well, sorry, I'll just say it now versus hold it till later. I really need a follow-up from this meeting. I need, myself, but I think the entire board would benefit. I'm really proud of how the Washington County cities have handled UGB expansions while I was a Metro counselor to present. I mean, they've really done a good job, which means North Bethany by Washington County, South Cooper Mountain, South Hillsborough, and that includes Witch Hazel thrown in there, River Terrace 1.0, as well as their planning work on 2.0 Cornelius. And Commissioner Willie, I can never remember the name of the new neighborhood that was built by Holt that begins with the letter L that is, that was a UGB expansion in 2018. And that neighborhood is built with middle housing that was not part of the thinking during the 2018 UGB cycle, was not quote-unquote required, okay? But it has all kinds of middle housing example, as does South Hillsborough. So I need to, I would really benefit from an email that pulls out those UGB expansion conditions for density specifically. And it might even help if you, if the planners have any idea there's what, what the condition was and what the overall area was built to in gross numbers. So I'd like to ask Jessica to come to the table to talk just a little bit about the question that was raised. While she's coming to the table, the other. What question? Which question? The one I just asked? No, the one I asked earlier about the, the historical piece on density. Okay. I'll allow that. Thank you. I should have asked you if it's okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jessica Pell's LET Policy Analyst, for the record. I did find the 2018 decision and they did include a condition for a minimum number of units for each expansion area.
Every UGB expansion does.
Yeah, and the, I think the question with the Sherwood one is what is shown in the concept plan? We've heard from Sherwood staff, they think doesn't accurately reflect the minimum number of homes that they want or reflects the, the average minimum density. And so I think that's part of the problem that they're talking about with Metro staff.
Sounds like a difference of understanding. Oh, to me.
No, I agree with you.
Okay, great. Okay. Yes, sir.
Laurel Woods.
Laurel Woods.
And I believe that's built, isn't it?
Yeah. I don't know if it's the entire expansion area or just a portion of.
It appears, we just toured it a few weeks ago, and it appears that it's all, all built essentially. There are a few areas where I think some of the street infrastructure is still happening, but it's, it's just about done.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Which is one reason, as we've had office conversations, me and various staff, I, from my experience as a Metro counselor, we always took tours around what is, what has happened on the ground since the last UGR, UGB cycle. And I've, and we made sure MPAC and everybody knew that that was part of the Metro Council process. I'm dismayed that I have not heard of them doing that because they should see Laurel Wood. They should see, it's a whole new Metro Council. They should see all these neighborhoods. And I think I'm, I would suggest that we draft a letter encouraging them and inviting them to do just that.
In conjunction with the city.
All of the cities, of course. Hillsborough, Cornelius, Washington County for Bethany and Tigard. I have a question if we're, if we're going to leave clarity for. Do you have something on this slide on the conditions?
Okay.
And that is, I just wanted to point out the affordability condition. I would underline that there are no apparent opportunities for funding for that, that potential condition. So I just point that out to us here. Unfunded mandate. And so I just wanted to point that out as part of that condition.
Okay.
Any last clarifying question for slide 13? Great. Now we'll move on. Thank you very much, Steph.
So this slide summarizes some of the feedback that we've heard at a high level about this so far. And so from a county staff perspective, we support the recommendation to include Sherwood West. We think that city of Sherwood has done what they were supposed to do. They prepared a concept plan that met the requirements and will continue to work with the city as they move through their process. County staff and others have raised some concerns about the growth rates and assumptions that were used by Metro. Specifically, there's concerns about adopting a baseline growth rate that may be lower than what we actually see happen. And there's some risk with planning for lower growth when you end up with higher growth. This can be things like, uh, infrastructure is undersized from what it actually needed to be. And we just want to make sure that we're not missing those opportunities to best utilize public funds and developer contributions. But on the other side, there's some concern about adopting a high-growth rate scenario as well. Specifically, what people are concerned about is that if Metro looks at that higher growth rate, they need to now find room for more housing units. And the concern is that that could result in possibly a higher density requirement for city of Sherwood beyond what their concept plan had planned for, or some other unintended consequences. Because as a part of the staff work that Metro did, they didn't test a high-growth scenario along with a, a more mixed housing growth scenario at the same time. And so there just wasn't some technical analysis behind what that could look like, and that opens up some uncertainty for us. And again, what we just talked about in the previous slide, there's a lot of concern about what these conditions could be. And so there's concern about this high growth could result in some additional conditions. The city of Sherwood is concerned about potential conditions requiring that additional housing density and about the regulated affordable housing requirements, as we discussed.
So this is a, this is a 20-year plan, right?
Yes.
And we get to renew it every six years?
Yeah.
So basically, they are piling the growth projection on Sherwood.
The gap, the gap.
So they're saying, if we have a baseline growth, Sherwood can absorb all that. If we have.
No, if we have a baseline growth, the current UGB plus Sherwood.
Can absorb it.
Right.
Yeah. But where I was going with that is if they would consider a higher growth rate, then they'd have to consider where else are we going to put the growth? And that's what they don't want to do.
I don't know if I'd frame it as that's what they don't want to do. I, I just think that the analysis has been conducted so far. On the Metro staff side, more supports that baseline growth, which is a little bit pessimistic compared to what we've seen before. And so then they're matching that gap, as the chair said, with what the city of Sherwood is asking for, as well as what we know we can fit through redevelopment within our centers and corridors. We have a lot of unrealized housing capacity within the region. I mean, all along TV Highway, we have a plan designation that allows 100 units an acre that hasn't been built. And so we know that we could absorb it within centers and corridors, but that's a different type of product than what Sherwood can build within the UGB expansion area. And that's where these, these conversations get complicated because now we're talking about building different types of housing to meet different needs, and that's different than just talking about the absolute numbers.
Can, can I add a little bit more here? They could choose to go with the high forecast as well. The requirement is no matter where they end up, no matter, they have to choose a point. So they have these three scenarios and they'll back into the point. So they have these three scenarios and they'll back into the point. It's, it has to be accommodated within the existing U G B plus expansions. Okay? And remember, Metro is restricted in terms of where they can condition development to. U G B expansion areas as well as centers and corridors. Due to a measure that. We voters passed in two thousand and two. So all the inner neighborhoods. The only thing that can, can affect redevelopment on inner neighborhoods is middle housing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I guess I just. Concerned about if we do exceed the baseline growth rate. I mean, we're constantly talking about the cost of housing and affordable. It's very difficult to achieve when we've got these increasing land costs and construction costs and all those things. And then we put another layer on it that says, we don't think we're going to grow any higher than this, and then we do. And we don't have any escape clause in there.
So we do have an escape clause. Metro is required to do this every six years. They're required to do a full U G R. But they can do an additional one at any point in between. They've also done an analysis of what were, what did the U G Rs and U G Bs say versus history? And they've been within three percent or lower with each one of them. So, and we've, and I'll also go on a limb, I don't have confidence, full hundred percent confidence like everything else I've just talked about. Or high degree, maybe not a hundred percent. We've always struggled. With having. Affordable housing ranges. It's, it's always existed. What's different this cycle is they seem, the current council. Seems to have provided direction to their staff to. Uh include conditions with regard to the, the range of affordability through a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. Do you need to correct anything I just said? Okay.
That was all correct.
Possibility, it needs to be corrected, and so I'm trying to make sure I'm reassuring staff.
Well, and you've made an interesting point, which is that Metro doesn't have to wait the six years to revisit this, and actually that happened in recent history, as I'm sure many of you recall, in twenty fifteen, they completed the six-year growth management cycle and adopted an urban growth report. And decided not to expand the urban growth boundary. Part of the challenge in twenty fifteen was that we were relying on recession data to make a lot of decisions, and everybody said. We were in a recession. This doesn't seem accurate as to what's going to be happening in the next few years. Let's do this again in three years. And that's why we did a full urban growth management decision in twenty eighteen rather than waiting till twenty twenty one, and then everything ended up a little bit off, so here we are in twenty four. Okay?
I'm so glad I'm not a Metro councillor anymore.
So uh we just talked a bit about these scenarios and the growth rates, and so the purpose of this table in the presentation is this is giving a little bit of information as to how the sausage is made in the background with Metro technical staff and some of the analysis that they're conducting. So with three different growth rates, low, baseline and high. Metro staff determined three different types of growth scenarios that could go along with that, and so these three scenarios they looked at testing were. One was called following in the footsteps, and so that meant kind of how we've grown historically, kind of a mix of the types of people, the types of households, the types of demand. Then there's a new normal, which is based on what we've seen in more recent years as far as more demand for, let's say, things like townhomes and other products that we've seen kind of a more, more of a mix. Middle housing being a part of that consideration as well. And then there was a scenario tested called strong urban market. I was joking around that this is like the Portlandia scenario, young people moving to Portland to retire. It's a lot of demand for uh more smaller households without children, lower wage kind of service type jobs. So with these options, there were nine possible scenarios you could have run, right? Three growth rates, three types of growth scenarios. Metro staff ran four of them, and so they picked four to run, and these are just, think of them as sensitivity testing. We're seeing what happens with the region's housing supply. We're seeing what's absorbed under these different possibilities. So you can see in these scenarios that there is a capacity deficit or surplus for single unit detached and middle housing or multifamily over in the right two columns. Under some of these scenarios, they're showing a gap, which is the red, that's the need for different types of housing, and in some we have a surplus, and that's when the text is in black. So none of these are actually what is in the COO recommendation. What ended up in the COO recommendation is most similar to number three, which is that new normal with the baseline growth, but it's not exactly what they ended up picking because again, some further technical analysis was conducted in the background, so. Sensitivity testing, think about what could happen.
I have a, a question on this chart. If I understand the chart right, between one and three. One, two and three, um well, all of them actually. There's, this chart suggests that. They're interested in seeing middle housing. Expand. By seven percent from fourteen, which I, I think is current to even more. And I'm wondering. Given your professional experiences working with the development community, is that? Does that seem to be following current trends?
I think that's a really good question, and we're trying to do a better job of tracking middle housing development. It certainly has picked up. It took a little while, I think, well, it took a little while for us to adopt the regulations for middle housing, and so those have only been in place for a few years, but in recent years, we've seen a lot more interest in developing middle housing product types. Townhomes are a middle housing product type, and anyone who's spent any time driving around new growth areas knows there's a lot of townhomes being built. They kind of hit that right price point for a lot of buyers these days. They meet density requirements. Builders are very comfortable with creating that product. So I don't think it's unreasonable that we could see more of a share of middle housing moving into the future.
And I'm, so I'm wondering. If anyone. I'm assuming that Metro has this by working with. You for North Bethany, Beaverton for South Cooper Mountain, Tigard with River Terrace one oh and then two oh. Concept planning as well as Cornelius with Laurel Wood. That. They've looked at the actual development permits. That have been secured and can demonstrate that. They. That this fourteen percent is the result of increased growth since twenty eighteen. And. That's only, that's six years, and it is new, so. So that this increase to twenty one percent is a very comfortable increase. I don't know if they're going to be getting any testimony on that, or if we're going to get. Criticized for supporting or weighing in on such a condition, but. That's why I was interested in hearing some real data around middle housing. Permits.
And we can work on that as a part of the follow up. It may take us a little while to put this together, though, so it may be a later follow up on what we've actually seen as far as the middle housing products. It's sometimes a little.
Later. Between now and.
A few weeks.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We can do it in a few weeks.
Okay, not by recommendation.
Right, not, possibly not by.
Before.
When impact happens.
But before the council has to make their final decision.
Yeah, we can work on a little bit of this. Um it, it gets a little bit complicated, I'll just say, with the tracking because we're also seeing middle housing products going in existing neighborhoods infill type middle housing developments, and so teasing it out from what's in the U G B expansions versus infill, um but we can certainly look at that.
Well, their U G R applies to the whole region as well, so I think it's, it's homogeneous apples to apples thing versus apples to orange.
And we've been working on our data on this so that we can more easily capture middle housing um in our database software in the background, so.
That, that I think would help us.
Yeah, and it might, might be illustrative, too. I know obviously Tigard and Beaverton are right in the middle of developing their previous U G B expansion areas. And I know both, in both cases, they had a developer that was interested in developing a middle housing product specifically on single family lots, and so they have implemented a number of duplex units and triplex units. Uh as well as more traditional townhome units uh that were probably um part of the original plan. So I think we could probably check in with a couple of the cities fairly quickly and to see if they have access to some fairly quick information about specifically in these U G B expansion areas.
Yep.
How that's going. And it is a, I, I'll just add, it is a very, very much an untested market. My understanding from the developer who was developing those middle housing units is they had really hoped to reach an affordability point that was in the. High three hundreds to low four hundreds, and they, they haven't been able to get down that low. Just the, the price of development all compiled up, um hasn't quite gotten them to that point yet, but.
Well.
The units seem to be selling.
It, it is possible. Uh having my first home purchase was a garden style condo. And. I want to move back to that.
There's a lot to be said for it, yes.
Yes. Uh so then similarly on the employment or industrial land capacity, they did a similar type of analysis, and so this is showing that gap using the low growth, baseline and high growth. There's been a lot of discussion on the industrial land analysis, and it's really complicated. We have a really good understanding of housing. It's easy to conceptualize what housing looks like. We know about how much land it requires, even if we start adding in the middle housing products. We just have a good understanding of this. Employment. Types and land use is so incredibly variable, and a lot of it just depends on the demand at that given moment, so it's really challenging to predict. As I mentioned earlier, we know that a lot of the industrial land supply is pretty parceled, meaning there's a lot of pieces of it, but they're very small and they're maybe not particularly. Useful to particular types of development. They may be far away from transportation facilities that are needed for whatever product is going to be produced and moved around. They may have some steep slopes. They may be brownfields. They may have other environmental constraints, and so they're just. Even though they show up as being zoned for industrial, they're going to be a part of the capacity, but they're not necessarily what somebody actually needs in order to meet that need, so. This particular U G R, when we're talking about what's new, I think there's been much more discussion about industrial land and how we evaluate industrial land than we've seen in some of the previous cycles, at least some of the recent cycles, which have focused more on housing needs specifically. So uh part of this was used to justify the Sherwood concept plan, that it does have those large lot sites that could be suitable for some industrial demand that can't be met elsewhere. So we are back at the timeline. So tomorrow, M P A C discussion with Metro staff and the COO to discuss the COO recommendation. We're missing one meeting in there, which is on September twelfth. Metro council will have a work session. I think that was the rescheduled work session that was supposed to happen last week and was canceled and rescheduled. And then September eighteenth, M T A C will, which is the staff committee associated with M P A C, will have their discussion and make a recommendation to M P A C. Uh September nineteenth, the Committee on Racial Equity will make a recommendation to Metro Council. September twenty fifth is a key date for Commissioner Truce because that's when M P A C will meet again and make their recommendations to council. Metro Council will then have a series of meetings and work sessions and hearings to talk about this. They're anticipating their first reading on their ordinance will be on November twenty first, and that'll be their first hearing, and then they are anticipating a second reading and decision on December fifth.
Yeah, so for your follow up information, that latter one. That we were just talking about deadline wise before November twenty first would be most convenient.
And then we're back to the questions, and so one of the questions we actually thought about adding here was, does your board want to send a letter? And it sounds like there may be some interest in drafting a letter to Metro Council as well.
I have a question on this slide. It's a clarifying question. Housing affordability requirements. There are currently no staff recommended conditions. Are there rules in place on housing affordability requirements?
Through Metro or the state or?
Either one.
Not that we know of, specifically relating to U G B expansions, and so that's something that would be new if it was applied here. Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven, which was the quick U G B expansion legislation passed earlier this year. Allows for up to a one hundred acre quick U G B expansion, and that did require, if a city chose that path, that they do meet certain affordability requirements, and so that's something new. That hasn't really been tested yet and isn't a part of the Metro decision, but I think that's where people are looking for inspiration about.
Also not, it does not apply to the Sherwood concept.
Correct. This is not a quick U G B expansion available through that legislation, but that legislation did have language in it that I think is now being used to consider a condition for Sherwood West.
So thank you for being a subject matter expert on that. I do not do a good job of following bill numbers versus. Topics. So the new housing production strategy. Bill, I can't remember the name of it, but it's my understanding that this. U G R is the first one since that bill was passed. And Metro through this U G R is trying to satisfy through those first two rows. Their. Housing. No, housing needs analysis per that bill. And I forgot, oh, maybe I haven't here my. No, I didn't bring it. The flyer on the Oregon. Housing needs analysis.
We didn't, it's in the packet, yes.
So. Are the rules for all of that stuff done?
No, the rulemaking process is underway right now, and so there's quite a bit of uncertainty as to how this will work. Our understanding as of right now is that jurisdictions within the state will have to follow this housing needs, housing production strategy. As a part of the identification of need, Metro will do that for the metro area and Metro will use. Yes, at the top, and Metro will use this urban growth report and the technical analysis behind it to determine our housing need and then allocate that out to the jurisdictions within Metro.
Will Metro do that or the Oregon Department of Administrative Services?
Oregon Department of Administrative Services will be setting the requirements, but these Metro numbers will be used to set that allocation, so part of the rulemaking will determine how that happens.
But the direction doesn't come from Metro on that issue.
Correct.
Comes from the state.
Came from the state, yes. But this is the number Metro will, Metro's.
I understand it's, it's. Metro right now is required to identify a regional need. They are not currently enabled to direct it at the city county level.
Correct.
And slash jurisdictional level.
And that's what the rulemaking will settle.
I'm not interested in Metro having that local control. Okay? That's why I wanted to raise it on this slide. I'm a firm believer in local control when it gets down to what a neighborhood's going to look like and where might they be? With the caveat that middle housing is enabled everywhere. So. We need your help to figure out if we have a discussion and decide on a board position with regard to that versus it just being done to us without us getting to use our voice. Additionally. Why this is also pertinent to this slide is I'm wondering how. Metro can require. Possibly require. Housing affordability requirements. If there are no rules in place to require it and given everything they've said about the spend out of. The affordable housing bond measure. I'm wondering what tools or incent, tools or grant resources they have to actually incentivize said requirements. Do you know something I don't know? Because if you do, please share it, because I don't know.
No.
No.
Okay, so. Okay, so I'm a little lost at this point and need your help and Commissioner Tries's help with regard to bringing this back up to board comments, because this is an area of concern that I have, given all that's been said. And how do we use our voice, given the decision timeline? With regard to that. So I'll just leave that to come back to.
And I think we do need to come back to that. That's probably another topic for an entire briefing where we sit up here for two hours and talk about it, because there's a lot happening with that housing rulemaking, and we do have staff tracking it, and it's happening at the same time as the UGRs and their.
But irrespective of the rulemaking, what I'm getting at is they want to put in a condition before that process is clearly defined through the rules, let alone adopted. So I would ask this board to consider that that condition is not acceptable. So that's to your point. So put a caveat, put a pin on it, and when we have questions for board consideration, please bring that up for us to close on during that.
Yep.
Okay? This is why this is a long topic today. Yes, perfect.
And I really appreciate the level of discussion here.
Do any board members have any other questions on what this slide is about? Okay, next slide.
I think this is it, actually, right?
Okay.
Oh, wait, we are back to the question.
Roundtable time, round robin time. We already know Commissioner Tries is going to bring us back for an ask. That's great. You haven't used up your turn, though. So commissioners, questions and comments?
I'll go, I'll ask a question. The, you could go back to the last slide. The housing affordability requirements, you said no staff recommended conditions. And then in the packet, there was a bit more detailed of the recommendations, potential conditions to consider. And I really like one of the things that what you said. I mean, I agree with you and I follow what you're recommending. This might be a bit unrealistic to expect. But what you said here was housing affordability. Metro could set out a conditions to guide the work of Metro and Sherwood together to ensure housing affordability and not just leave it up to the market. I like that last part. How do we, you know? Because what I hear in the community is there are a lot of houses, but they're really not affordable. So how do we make sure that whatever houses that get built, they're actually affordable? The community that wants to purchase, that should be purchasing. So while I don't, I'm in support of what you're recommending in that condition, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the part about not leaving it to the market. We need to figure out how to control so that we create robust homeowners in Washington County, throughout Washington County.
And Commissioner, you raised a good point that I want to clarify. We should have been more articulate on this slide, but these were county staff potential considerations. And so when we say staff recommended, we meant county staff in this particular slide. Yeah.
So what is the Metro recommendation?
So the Metro recommendation, as Commissioner Phi just articulated, is really to have Metro work with the City of Sherwood to help ensure that there will be some affordability requirements within the community to help ensure that there is that range of affordabilities.
And just to follow up on this, we haven't seen any specific conditions proposed by Metro staff yet.
Right.
Everything that we've heard is from discussions with Sherwood city staff, Metro staff, but we haven't seen anything in writing. So we're anticipating that tomorrow's MPAC, or today, tomorrow, tomorrow's MPAC, will have a more robust discussion on potential conditions and actual words for those.
Again, if I can articulate in time to your thoughts here, I think that we can recommend that there are discussions about affordable housing opportunities that includes the necessary funding. Because I, I'm not comfortable personally telling Sherwood, yes, you have to have X amount of affordable housing, when there's no funding opportunity. We know how difficult it is to build affordable housing and the with baklava type of layering that needs to go into getting that funding. So to put it as a condition, I'm very uncomfortable with. To put it as a recommendation for continued look and understanding that it requires funding, I would be more comfortable with. That's, that's my view on that condition. So page 73 of the packet includes a summary of four bullets of recommendations from Metro staff to the Metro Council. Okay? So the second bullet is that housing affordable one. So let's make sure in terms of going through this. You're the first one, so we're on your round. Are you thumbs up on, are you supportive of all those conditions? Or I need you each to weigh in on the conditions.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Mix of housing types, I'm in support of Washington County's staff recommendation as listed here. The housing affordability requirements, I'm in support of being like the conditions not being too rigid for Sherwood. But I do like the part of not leaving it up to the market. However, we can creatively put our guardrails around housing affordability and now, once these houses are up. So I'm in support of that, while I also support there's no recommendations for this particular piece. What you, so to, I think if I could be more succinct, I think I'm saying I'm supportive of no staff recommendation recommending conditions. But the aspirations that I would like to see for us to promote and to recommend is that we put a guardrails around affordability requirements moving forward. So it's more particularly around the markets.
I'm confused. We have information in the memo from our staff. This slide is, they are recommending to us, they haven't, they're not weighing in. We need to weigh in on these four bullets in the memo. Okay, thank you, Chair. So does everybody have the memo in front of you? Because it's in the packet. I have two memos up going.
Page two of the memo.
Right, right. So it's right.
If I could maybe rephrase to make sure my notes are correct in what you were saying. So I think what you're saying is you're not in favor of very prescriptive affordable housing requirements for the City of Sherwood, but you're supportive of continuing the conversations and possibly identifying funding to support regulated affordable housing.
Very well said. Thank you.
That's what I wrote down.
Thank you. I love when you.
Yeah.
I was trying to summarize and make sure my notes were accurate. I think what Commissioner Phi was saying is that she is not supportive of prescriptive requirements for regulated affordable housing within Sherwood West, but she is supportive of continued conversations around how to provide affordable housing and identify funding for it.
Okay, so no requirement.
Correct, correct.
And that, I think, sort of dovetails nicely with Commissioner Tries's recommendation, no mandates without funding. So, and I was going to add, I'll have to go back and look again, but I believe the North Bethany UGB expansion ordinance back in 2002, I want to say, may have had some encouragements around affordable housing. And so we did develop an affordable housing guideline document that had some incentives like density bonuses and things that would encourage potentially higher-density housing that should be therefore more affordable. And I don't recall that any developers actually took us up on that, but we did the work and had the, had the capacity and capability.
It was all encouraged. There was no requirement, so therefore it was not a condition for construction, right? There was a requirement for the jurisdiction to pursue enabling, but they didn't have to enable it, implement it.
And I would just comment that in 2024, the situation is so different than it was in 2002 that I'd be uncomfortable unless I saw the language with adopting any of that previous.
I just, so for, for sake of clarity, we only got through two of the four bullets with Commissioner Phi.
Thank you, Chair. I'm in support of the industry, the recommendation for large lot, large sites. However, the inclusive community engagement. Could you articulate why you didn't recommend Metro's recommendation on this part? Seems in alignment of our community engagement model.
Yeah, I think, I think we were just saying that we didn't have any specific recommendations that we would propose. That doesn't mean that we were not supportive of the Metro conditions that were suggested or outlined briefly in the, in the recommendation. So we, we do support inclusive.
Making a recommendation to us. It's up for us to decide.
Okay. And it's not that Sherwood wouldn't do inclusive community engagement. It's, we wouldn't, we're not recommending a mandate on how they do that engagement, so, okay.
And, no, that's not what you said earlier.
Oh.
Your staff recommendation, you've made no comment.
No comments, right.
Right? So you could, you could substitute no comment for each of those. We can remain silent on it.
I think I like, I like Washington County's community engagement model, which also is in alignment about centering marginalized communities and really having a robust community member engagement residence. So while some of these languages seem a bit Metro-focused, and I'm looking at the Metro recommendation around inclusive community engagement, they, they're recommending that Metro Council could consider conditions for a broad-based approach to community engagement when Sherwood develops their comprehensive plan for Sherwood West that includes community members, community-based or representation, representing historically marginalized and interested groups. So I just want, I would recommend that we make a recommendation that is in alignment of our Washington County-specific practice around how we engage residents and community members. I, I could vaguely remember Sherwood's engagement was pretty robust. There was no red flags, as I could remember, of any population being missed. But saying no staff recommend, like, while the condition seemed like too rigid for me, we could make a recommendation that is in alignment, that isn't something that is going to require them to do something specific. So that, that's just my recommendation, that we figured out a language that is in alignment with Washington County's engagement model that says Sherwood will do this, and this is what we feel comfortable as a board.
So to put that crisply, yes, she's in support of that condition. Next. Anyone?
I'll go through, I'll go through mine. I support both of the staff recommendations for mixed housing types and industrial site protection. I think I've made it clear on my housing affordability.
So compared to this bullet list, they've repeated the same one here.
Okay.
Okay, so for the Metro conditions, for the first bullet here, yes. For the third bullet here, yes.
Okay, thank you. And, and on the last one, inclusive community engagement, I think our recommendation easily could be, we support the work that Sherwood has done in reaching out to their community and recommend they continue that. I believe in part that's what she said.
No, she read exactly what was in the recommendation, which is different.
No, I, no, that's not correct. I, I read it and then I articulated, I think it's in alignment with your sound, right? I mean, the staff is out what you heard.
They haven't commented. They have provided no further recommendation to us. The the recommendation from Metro staff to the Metro Council requires that Sherwood also work with CBOs and others to include people who don't necessarily reside or receive current city notifications. So it's a bit more expansive, which is what I heard you be in support of.
Well, we have the recording. Verbatim, I think.
Commissioner Willie?
Well, I agree with one and three, and I think I'm referring to page 25 in the packet, which is exactly the suggestions that she sent us on another
Yeah.
document.
In the full packet, it's page 73.
So then the question I have is on this one, you're saying, we've had this conversation. I'm just making sure I understand what we've concluded here. No staff recommendation, but in the verbiage, you do make recommendations. You said Metro Council could set out conditions to guide the work. So it's kind of a recommendation.
This isn't, this isn't Washington County content. This is
Yeah.
Metro staff content, this bullet list.
We were using it as an example of what Metro Council could do based on what they prepared.
Okay.
And this language actually is copied from the COO.
Yeah, right. Okay, I'm sorry.
Landed with your word.
No, those were from the CO. This is in the, yeah, from the CO recommendation, but we were using it illustratively.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, I agree with your four points.
And on the housing affordability piece, would you like to support the Metro condition as is or add in the no mandates without funding?
Yeah, definitely agree with you.
Great, no mandates.
No mandates.
Okay. And on inclusive community engagement, do you want to exercise your voice at all?
Well, I think what Pam said was
Sherwood.
Was sufficient.
Yeah.
Continue the good work that you've been doing in.
Yep. Okay. Commissioner Rogers?
Well, as usual, you never bring anything that's too easy to us. It's kind of awkward in many ways, because there's two things in my mind that we're dealing with. One, you're Sherwood, which is in front of us, but I always look at things to the future. That's just the latest one. Whatever we do as a guide, because this is the first under the new middle housing standards, is probably going to apply to any future kinds of activity in Washington County. So why do I even bring that up? Because one, whatever things we talk about, probably are going to come back to haunt the board at some later date in terms of what you said. Unless your faces are all different, maybe are you still in the same place? So for, and then I'll get specific on Sherwood, specifically for the future. I, I like the baseline approach. That's one of the questions. Really difficult on, on cities when you start doing high, high-density, high-growth, because they don't know what middle housing's going to do to them. They're struggling with that at great lengths. As, as far as the As as far as the worked for affordability, we all want that, and we encourage, and we should encourage everyone, because partners, not just us, but cities as well, affordability.
Encourage, but no mandates without funding is.
Perfect, yeah.
Yep.
The the whole issue on on the inventory, initial here in every economic development group, is is there lots of economic development land? Yeah, if you're going to put a plant of less than an acre and produce, I don't know what that would be, but there's nothing aggregated. And and so the the third issue is is important. Fourth one, I I really like Commissioner Treese's approach to it. That's really the way it should be, and that's trying to say something other than that, I think is appropriate. So so I I was forgetting Sherwood, I would say that in our to the future or any activity that Metro would have. Now, specifically to Sherwood, because this talks about Sherwood. That's why I get a little awkward, just personally, because I really believe in home rule. I really think they have the ability to do what they need to do locally. And as of this date, Pam, you might know better, I I don't know what they're really going to ultimately land on. You you think that you have input, but really they're the ultimate inputter because they can just withdraw. What they're interested in is a density lot less than being proposed. If they don't get that, they'll probably withdraw. They want that large development of the industrial because they think the region needs it and they need it. If we want to support it, they just withdraw. So that's why I find it awkward. The first part where I said to Washington County, I don't have any issues with, because we're talking with our partners and saying, these are good things to do with the constraints. Second part in regard to Sherwood, I feel a little awkward in making recommendations where I don't know really what they are. I don't know what they're going to do, and Pam, you might know, but I think they're evolving right now and saying, where do we want to land? So we could go with recommendations being asked, only have them say, Gia County, why why are you doing what you're doing? Because that's not where we're at at all. You're kind of micromanaging us. Why don't you support us? You know, and so that's where I'm at with that issue.
I if I might respond to that.
Please.
I think that that there is a lot of discussion and things are evolving, but it's as much around definition of terms that we talked about earlier in relationship to middle housing and those types of pieces that make it difficult. But I think if we talk about recommending the Sherwood concept plan, concept plan and their density recommendations, that gives us the flexibility to to go with what their recommendations.
I thought you were talking about industrial sites.
I'm, yeah, I'm talking, I was talking about industrial.
I'm sorry.
But her point, her point, her point is, well, thinking on the.
So I'm trying to get clear on you and industrial sites.
Yeah. On industrial sites, whether it be in the city of Hillsborough, Beaverton, Tualatin, or Sherwood, I think we should support anything that aggregates large industrial tract.
Yep.
So I think that's, if our statement to Metro is not just inclusive, and again, my brain might be not functioning the way the rest of you, but I'm looking at what's a county statement regarding where we're at, large industrial sites, we would support that no matter where it's at, that we need industrial growth, right?
Yep.
And Sherwood fits into that because they're saying that. In regard to the housing, and I understand.
I'm sorry.
I know you you talked with Tim and I talked with Tim, and he's not knowing exactly where they're going to land at this point. You might have more update, but would we do the same thing in Hillsborough, Beaverton, Tualatin, if they came with something? And that's that's what I'm asking. Would we defer if Hillsborough said, I I can't, I don't.
But that isn't what's before us today.
It's not what's before us, but I'm just saying, thinking of.
And you're between us and a break, so. So I'm trying to close this.
And I also think.
You can take a break. We keep talking.
I also think it's different in this particular situation because of the lack of clarity right now. So so.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go. I'm fine on the mix of housing, as most of my colleagues are. On housing affordability, I'm right there with, yes, we want to see more affordable housing in the region and encourage that, but no mandates without funding. And they can't say, well, that's one reason why we want to make changes with the SHS funding, because we know, I know with forecasts, we've, the early days of hearing from the Metro Economist on forecasts that there isn't any additional funding to redirect. So we're either going to have to reduce our goals on addressing homelessness on our streets and in our communities, or we're going to achieve affordable housing goals, but it's not, it's not as simple as just capture and build. The industrial site stuff, like the the majority of the commission set on that. On the inclusive community engagement, what we're talking about here is a is a neighborhood that, you know, a large, it's large scale. 1,291 acres is a large UGB expansion. I think, though I haven't seen a table that goes back over history. And so I'm actually in support of, like with Commissioner Phi, on the inclusive community engagement and the CBO and tribe historically marginalized communities, because now is the time to make sure we've, the community of Sherwood has heard from voices that would like to live in Sherwood but don't currently have the ability to live in Sherwood. Now, they may have done that already with the concept plan, okay, or think that they have done, but the Metro Council hasn't seen it demonstrated. So that's where I have to assume that the Metro Council hasn't seen that demonstrated and therefore is going to require that through the comprehensive planning stage to make sure that that's done. I'm fine with that, right? It's just a planning step. Get more information. Don't we all reserve the right to get smarter? So that's where I think that is a healthy request, though I respect that three of you aren't quite there. So if we could, so we wanted to check in on, or through the course of our conversation, we wanted to check in on the specific conditions. We've given direction for our M-PAC liaison. I need you to go back to the question for board consideration slide, please. So we've given specific content to our M-PAC liaison for meetings this month, and we've provided comment with regard to formalizing that input on a potential letter. Now, but we, you haven't, I'm in support of the baseline, as is Commissioner Rogers, but I haven't heard the baseline thought from the three of you.
Based on the way that we discussed that, I would I would be comfortable with baseline giving away. By the way, we've had this conversation, I'm supported.
I I support the baseline as well, based on, again, based on the fact that it's it's a risk-reward type of situation, and I think that, and and we want to get this over the end line as well. So I've I'm in support of that.
Good thorough conversation. Commissioner Treese, do you have any other questions?
I I do have a question. Tomorrow night is our discussion night. If there are significant changes that I hear tomorrow night, may I work with LUT staff to get that communication back to everybody here? That's how I would like to handle.
I think you're required to.
Well, yeah. I didn't, the reason.
Problem is, the problem that you have, which is why we've spent the time to go over this in detail, and I know I've kept my tally here, is you only have September 17th. So what we're saying is, yes, we are through these notes, yes, we are in favor of M-PAC recommending three of the four bullets.
Okay. And what I will do is work with staff to summarize the discussion from tomorrow night for your information.
I'm comfortable that M-PAC is going to go over all kinds of nuance, and that will have to come back to us in October.
Okay.
For a letter to council. You just added that piece in.
Or potential.
So on the topic of letters, we've given our direction to our M-PAC liaison and to our staff. I think we should entertain a letter, and I'm more than happy to work with Grace to develop such a letter to encourage the council to come and tour UGB expansion areas, all of which happen to be in Washington County in recent time. So I'll work on that for next Tuesday. I don't think that we need to write a letter for our summary, but you're going to figure that out through the M-PAC process. And therefore, we will come back to it no sooner than October 1st. Because you got to pay attention to our meeting calendar. Anything else on this topic? It's a big hairy UGR this year, that's for sure.
So thank you for your time.
Okay, at this juncture, we're going to take a 15-minute break and then reconvene at 20 minutes to the hour, and then we'll finish up with our last topic of today's meeting. Thank you.
Stephen, did you see my request? Did I even send it? About meeting at.
So, I think we should have been involved in that whole thing, so we can always do that.
Funny about that. Because I think it's just about, and it's been so bad, so I wanna-
Well, the merge whole thing is great.
Yeah.
I had a name on here.
Oh, you do?
Oh, wow.
All right. Welcome back, missionaries. Back to you Chair Harrington.
Yes, thank you Clerk Mus. We are back from break, and our last topic today is board and leadership communication. Want to start with board first or leadership first? What's leadership feeling?
Get ready.
Okay.
I'm gonna put my head down before I know-
We're gonna start with Clean Water Services, then go-
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
This is really simple. We're just really excited about the emergency management planning, and we're very thankful for the county and the emergency management team and to invite us and to allow us to participate. The employees are excited about this level of planning, and we have a lot more that we need to do. And Elizabeth is working on getting us an emergency manager for Clean Water Services to really augment this planning that we need to do. So we're really excited that the board is interested in especially the earthquake planning and as well as all of the other annexes. But yeah, we're on a good track, I think. Yeah. National preparedness.
Great. Great. Well, I know we're all looking forward to our CWS Learning Day coming up in November. So, great. Are we passing around coffee?
That's what I was wondering.
We're giving the piece of that.
I feel like I'm-
We didn't get the memo.
My apologies. Yes, coffee. Okay, we got everybody's attention now? Legal, it's yours.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. Sort of following up on Mr. Nelson's presentation this morning in the area of tax. I wanted to let you know that this is the week where we start our tax foreclosure process, where we file a complaint with the court listing the properties that where we have delinquent taxes. I believe there's about thirty on that list. Unclear right now how many are residential, but I wanted to take this time to remind you as facilities and ANT were before your board not too long ago to talk about our One Washington County approach to making sure, connecting with the residential residents who are on, the residential property owners who are on that list, to try and connect them to resources, to find ways to help them get out of delinquent status and stay in their home. So we're starting, that work is just starting about now. I also wanted to let you know, you may have seen in the paper an article about the North Plains lawsuit, the referendum. We're taking that, we're looking into that a little more closely, and we'll have some further communication with you on it later this week. Other than that, I'm looking forward to going to the LUT barbecue on Thursday. I'm sure it's on many of your calendars as well, and that's for me.
Thursday, we-
You're gonna miss it.
Have a round table.
Well, the afternoon, never mind, I won't go. But if you're listening, you should go.
And Wednesday, too.
Yes. So, save us food.
Actually, I believe it's tomorrow, September eleventh. So, if it's on your calendars, and this is the-
There's, so today's Tuesday. After we finish this section of our agenda, I believe we'll be adjourned for the day. Tomorrow is Wednesday, where we have both the Emergency Management Fair, which I'll talk about, as well as an AOC District Eight meeting, which is much of the day. Then on Thursday, we have a board roundtable. It is a very full day as well. It's a busy board week.
It's a busy board week, and so I will draw your attention to another event that is happening and it sounds like will not coincide with your calendars tomorrow, Wednesday, September eleventh. And that is when the LUT department is celebrating turning forty. As part of context and history, in nineteen eighty-four, our land use and transportation was officially named a department within Washington County after the merger of Planning and Public Works. LUT has spent decades, as your board is aware, focused on safety and welcoming and creating an economic viable community. So just, this is a time for staff to get to celebrate and get together. Chairs, you indicated the board is very busy tomorrow, so I just want to lift this up, that this was an invite sent to the board, but your calendars are already full. I'd like to touch briefly on the Washington County Data Equity Assessment Project. This is one of the ARPA-funded projects. Last week, one Washington County team, or a cross-functional team, launched the county's first data equity assessment, and this is in partnership with Portland State University School of Social Work. The launch is a key investment of your ARPA community resilience framework. The goal of this project is to advance data equity, to build improved resilient data systems and processes to transform data processes across the county. So this is truly a One Washington County approach. In many of our boards or commissions or community meetings, quite frequently, we're asked, what's the data tell us? How can you disaggregate data by race? How are you using data to inform? And so this is such a key, while it may appear to be an internal system improvement, this is really essential work to modernize the county and provide equitable practices moving forward, that we can have those robust conversations on what is our data? Who do we serve? How do we need to improve our services for equitable service delivery within the county? Deflection update. On Friday, I believe, you received a deflection update just for members of our community and also your board. Learned yesterday from our deflection operations team that so far four people have qualified for deflection, and that's out of fourteen total citations, and two haven't officially enrolled in the program. So due to community interest, you will continue to receive those updates, and I will also provide you routine updates through leadership updates. And that concludes my update.
Thank you very much. Board members, who would like to go first?
I can go first.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So it's been a busy week, and it'll continue to be a busy week. The last Wednesday, I attended the ArmDAC meeting. We discussed a few things. We elected, they elected new officers, which are the same officers, for the coming year. A big point of discussion was the Neighborhood Streets Program, and I'm just gonna pass out to you the door, a new door hanger that's going out in support of the Neighborhood Streets Program. They're also talking about a possible recommendation of policy changes on this program, back to the board. They're starting the investigation into whether or not Neighborhood Streets programs should be reduced from a sixty-seven percent agreement to fifty-one, and also the, whether or not rental units would be included in the, in the program. So it's, it's all in discussion now, but they are actively engaged with this. The Thursday was a briefing on the MPAC meeting that we've discussed ad nauseam, and I won't go into any more of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Then on Friday, I attended the Plaza de los Amigos brand opening, which was really cool. The chair spoke there, and it was, oh, I'm sorry. It was you that spoke there. You did a good job.
Often confused, yes.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Oh, but you did mustache. But you did such a good job. I'm sorry, I forgot.
I'm sure the chair did a great job, and I was there, too. Thanks for your supporting role.
Oh, boy. Okay. I'm gonna be, I gotta go on here.
I did talk to the TV channel. There you go, okay. But it is a very impressive site, and they've done such a wonderful job in reflecting the community there, which is, it was great to see. Yesterday, I had the AOC Legislative Committee meeting. It was, it was a pretty quick meeting in general. Chair, you may want to talk about that further. I also attended the Sheriff's Office Recognition and Swearing In Ceremony. And then last night, we had an acre meeting, which was a really, really well-done acre meeting. Thank you to staff for making that work. Lisa Tattersall did a presentation on the library system, and really did a good job. Our acre meetings, I was commenting last night that everybody around the table spoke. Everybody's engaged, everybody's asking questions. Some of the questions can be a little bit gotcha-type of questions, but Lisa really fielded them well. And I learned from one of our members that for, for a community that she represents, the library is the most trusted place in Washington County, even above the food banks. What I'm quoting what she said. And it gave me pause to think about just the depth of impact that our library system has in our community. So I wanted to report that back to you as well. The, tomorrow, we do have the AOC District Eight meeting. Thank you in advance for your attendance there. We have eight legislators that are gonna be coming at noon, and many staff people. We also have the chair, all three chairs will be there, and we have representatives from Clackamas County as well. We're hoping that additional folks will come from Multnomah County. Let's see. This, we've got the roundtable, the tour of the elections. I also have a PAV meeting on Thursday night that I'll be attending, and we are looking at the draft caper. The, that's the evaluation piece and that we'll be, we'll be sending back on our work. And I'll give you a report on what that looks like.
To allow us to participate, the employees are excited about this level of planning and we have a lot more that we need to do and Elizabeth is working on getting us an emergency manager for Clean Water Services. Really augment this planning that we need to do. So we're really excited that the board is interested in especially the earthquake planning and as well as all of the other annexes. But yeah, we're on a a good track, I think. Yeah. National preparedness.
Great, great. Well, I know we're all looking forward to our CWS Learning Day coming up in November. So, great. We passing around coffee?
We're giving the piece of that.
We didn't get the memory.
My apologies. Yes. Okay, we got everybody's attention now. Legal, it's yours.
Good, uh, good afternoon Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. I'm sort of following up on Mr. Nelson's presentation this morning in the area of tax. I wanted to let you know that this is the week where we start our tax foreclosure process, where we file a complaint with the court, listing the properties that where we have delinquent taxes. I believe there's about thirty on that list. Unclear right now how many are residential, but I wanted to take this time to remind you as facilities and A and T were before your board not too long ago to talk about our One Washington County approach to making sure, doing, connecting with the residential residents who are on the residential property owners who are on that list to try and connect them to resources to find ways to help them get out of delinquent, delinquent status and stay in their home. So we're starting, that work is just starting about now. I also wanted to let you know, you may have seen in the paper, an article about the North Plains lawsuit, the referendum. We're taking that, we're looking into that a little more closely and we'll have some further communication with you on it later this week. Other than that, I'm looking forward to going to the LUT barbecue on Thursday. I'm sure it's on many of your calendars as well. And that's for me.
Thursday, we have a roundtable.
Never mind, I won't go, but if you're listening, you should go.
Save us food.
Actually, I believe it's tomorrow, September eleventh. So if it's on your calendars and this is the
So today's Tuesday. After we finish this section of our agenda, I believe we'll be adjourned for the day. Tomorrow is Wednesday where we have both the Emergency Management Fair, which I'll talk about, as well as an AOC District Eight meeting, which is much of the day. Then on Thursday, we have a board roundtable. It is a very full day as well. It's a busy board week.
It's a busy board week, and so I will draw your attention to another event that is happening and it sounds like will not coincide with your calendars tomorrow. Wednesday, September eleventh, and that is when the LUT department is celebrating turning forty. As part of context and history, in nineteen eighty-four, our land use and transportation was officially named a department within Washington County after the merger of Planning and Public Works. LUT has spent decades, as, as your board is aware, focused on safety and welcoming and creating an economic viable community. So just, this is a time for staff to get to celebrate and get together. Chairs, you indicated the board is very busy tomorrow. So I just want to lift this up that this was an invite sent to the board, but your calendars are already full. I, I'd like to touch briefly on the Washington County Data Equity Assessment Project. This is one of the ARPA funded projects. Last week, one Washington County team or a cross-functional team launched the county's first data equity assessment, and this is in partnership with Portland State University School of Social Work. The launch is a key investment of your ARPA Community Resilience Framework. The goal of this project is to advance data equity, to build improved resilient data systems and processes to transform data processes across the county. So this is truly a One Washington County approach. And many of our boards or commissions or community meetings quite frequently were asked, what's the data tell us? How can you disaggregate data by race? How are you using data to inform? And so this is such a key, while it may appear to be an internal system improvement, this is really essential work to modernize the county and provide equitable practices moving forward, that we can have those robust conversations on what is our data, who do we serve, how do we need to improve our services for equitable service delivery within the county. Deflection update, on Friday, I believe you received a deflection update just for members of our community and also your board learned yesterday from our deflection operations team that so far four people have qualified for deflection and that's out of fourteen total citations and two haven't officially enrolled in the program. So due to community interest, you will continue to receive those updates and I will also provide you routine updates through leadership updates. And that concludes my update.
Thank you very much. Board members, who would like to go first?
I can go first.
Thank you, absolutely. So it's been a busy week and it'll continue to be a busy week.
The last Wednesday, I attended the ArmDAC meeting. We discussed a few things. We elected, they elected new officers, which are the same officers for the coming year. A big point of discussion was the Neighborhood Streets Program, and I'm just going to pass out to you the door, a new door hanger that's going out in support of the Neighborhood Streets Program. They're also talking about a possible recommendation of policy changes on this program back to the board. They, they're starting the investigation into whether or not Neighborhood Streets programs should be reduced from a sixty-seven percent agreement to fifty-one and also the, whether or not rental units would be included in the, in the program. So it's, it's all in discussion now, but they are actively engaged with this. The Thursday was as briefing on the impact meeting that we've discussed ad nauseam and I won't go into any more of that. You're welcome. Then on Friday, I attended the Plaza de los Amigos brand opening, which was really cool. The chair spoke there and it was, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, was you that spoke there? You did a good job.
Often confused, yes.
Oh, but you did a mustache. But you did such a good job. I'm sorry, I forgot.
I'm sure the chair had a great job and I was there too.
Thank you for your supporting law.
Okay. I'm gonna be, I, I gotta go on here.
I did talk to the TV channel.
There you go, okay. But it is a very impressive site and they've done such a wonderful job in reflecting the community there, which was, it was great to see. Yesterday, I had the AOC Legislative Committee Meeting. It was, it was a pretty quick meeting in general. Chair, you may want to talk about that further. I also attended the Sheriff's Office Recognition and Swearing In Ceremony. And then last night, we had an acre meeting, which was a really, really well-done acre meeting. Thank you to staff for making that work. Lisa Tattersall did a presentation on the library system and really did a good job. Our acre meetings, I was commenting last night that everybody around the table spoke. Everybody's engaged, everybody's asking questions. Some of the questions can be a little bit gotcha type of questions, but Lisa really fielded them well. And I learned from one of our members that for, for a, a community that she represents, the library is the most trusted place in Washington County, even above the food bank. That's what I'm quoting what she said. And it gave me pause to think about just the depth of impact that our library system has in our community. So I wanted to report that back to you as well. The, tomorrow, we do have the AOC District Eight Meeting. Thank you in advance for your attendance there. We have eight legislators that are going to be coming at noon and many staff people. We also have the chair, all three chairs will be there and we have representatives from Clackamas County as well. We're hoping that additional folks will come from Multnomah County. Let's see. This, we've got the roundtable, the tour of the elections. I also have a PAV meeting on Thursday night that I'll be attending. And we are looking at the draft caper, the, that's the evaluation piece and that we'll be, we'll be sending back on our work. And I'll give you a report on what that looks like at the next meeting. And Saturday is the fifth year celebration of community libraries at Cedar Mill and at Bethany. This will be the second time I attend because I went last Saturday and I had the wrong day. I will be there on the right day.
How did Jerry do on his speech?
Well, I did a fabulous job on Saturday, but the chair didn't come.
Chair was on her bike ride.
Maida, you're gonna need to step in a little bit.
I'm done, I'm done.
Who would like to go next after all that?
Comedy routine, let's.
I know, you're setting the bar pretty high.
I'll continue, shoot. So as I've been doing for the last couple of months, going around to my six cities and making presentations to their city council meetings, I did that last week to the City of Hillsborough and what is specifically to the City of Hillsborough, I gave an update on the CAT program. And, and yeah, so that was good. So anyway, also had a board, fair board meeting. And I feel like I've already told you this, but if I have, I'm telling you again. So this last fair was, we set all kinds of new records. The attendance was up nineteen percent, hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and eleven people came through the gate and that does not include vendors and all of that. So these are
Nice weather, sure is a wonderful thing.
It is, perfect weather for all ten days. Carnival revenue up twenty-two percent, concession revenue up twenty-seven percent, parking revenue up thirty percent, and what is probably even more fun is sixty-two percent increase in livestock interest. So.
Two or three?
Thirty-two?
Oh, sixty-two.
Yep. So yeah, we had seven hundred and ninety-four livestock entries this year. So kudos to Leah and her team out at the fairgrounds, putting on a great fair. So also attended the AOC Transportation Steering Committee Meeting. Then I wrapped up the day, of course, going to the grand opening of the Plaza de los Amigos. You've already heard about that. Catherine did a great job there.
So did Jerry, by the way.
Saturday, this was Cornelius's week last week. Saturday, we went out to the, celebrate the grand opening of the Drake Learning Center. That was been named after Rob Drake, their long-term city manager. And that, they have done a phenomenal job on that. That's attached, of course, to the library out there and it's just going to be a great place for kids to go and learn. So kids and adults, actually. So let's see, I spoke at the Sheriff's Employee Recognition Swearing In Ceremony yesterday. Pam was there too, but
I was in another meeting.
Pam was there, so, but I kept her under control a little bit better than usual. So last night was acre and as you pointed out, acre is always engaging, two hours of U and A for presentations. And with that, Lisa did do a great job. And so now those who are in the know, now they have one of these little things, this is the WCCLS logo and so of course.
Get your sticker a couple of weeks ago?
Courtney, no, I got it last night. Courtney and I have proudly showing that. Where's everybody else's?
We got them a couple of weeks ago.
I'm saying, where are they? Let's, okay, let's show them off, okay. Yeah, where's yours?
All sorts of library stickers.
Okay.
My laptop doesn't have room for all the stickers.
Okay, so anyway. And, you know, Danny did an okay job on presenting. See, he knew that was coming.
What did she present them?
I don't know. It was good though. It was good.
About the Office of OEIC and how we're embedding equity into all of our
Oh, great, the OEIC, yeah, the Strategic Action Plan that was presented at the board a couple, two weeks ago. Good job, Danny.
Very good job.
I said she did an okay job, that's. So tomorrow, gonna go to the AOC District Eight Meeting. Gonna go to the LUT fortieth anniversary and I think that's Stephen Roberts' birthday, his fortieth birthday.
We do not comment on age.
And let's see, Thursday morning, I will be at our morning roundtable. I will not be here in the afternoon as I will be going to Salem for the Council of Forest Trust Lands meeting, which we have invited representatives for all fifteen trust counties. We will be having conversations on the options, the timber options that I have been communicating with you guys about as well. And then Friday, I think we will continue with another small table timber meeting. So just continuing, so there we go.
Commissioner Rogers, I'm not following any of that. I'll wait. Go ahead, take it away.
He's a busy boy.
Last Thursday and Friday, two transportation meetings, one at WEA. We had Susan McLean and Senator Gorsick, they're the two chairs of the Transportation Committee. Friday morning, I saw Susan again, this time with Chris Strickler in Towalton for what they call their pardon me, they're a nice donor, by the way, key leaders breakfast. Just for your information, when I keep pushing personally, it's a three-pronged approach, nobody's disagreeing. They're just trying to get things done, I think a little faster and they're ready. Because my comments seem to resonate with a lot of business people and that is why I think that they really, really, really should take a look internally to see that they've overturned every rock to see if there's any money under it. They should really have some kind of a public relations piece to the public that they have economized. I mean, this is no different than we do here at the county or anybody else. Have, have they said the right things in terms of saving money? Two, I said you need to really, and nobody disagreed with me, by the way, by the speakers. Two, you need to prioritize like our misstep program. Their system's too big. They're maintaining things they can't maintain. They prioritize their funding based upon levels of service. Susan says they're starting to do that. Chris says he'd like to do that. And then three, I don't doubt that they need more revenue, but do it like every school district in the state does it. You find projects that everybody likes or you find things that, you know, are not funded on the top and you slot your money accordingly. So if they thought like back in the eighties when we came up with the misstep program, we started grinding up roads. People didn't like that. So they said, what do you need? We said, we need more money. So what you do is you prioritize down. And so they, they're listening, they think that Washington County has done a good job. It's certainly not due to just LUT or myself or any of you, it's, it's everybody collectively. Anyway, we're discussing all of that. I might squeeze in a meeting Thursday morning since we're starting a little earlier. It's Government Relations Meeting at WA. I always like to hear what they're saying. And I think that it depends on whether our position is that we want growth or we don't want growth. If we don't want growth, we ought to ban this book in Washington County, because I don't know what you all think your life is worth. But I think a year in your life is worth a lot. Or a male, if you live in Washington County, you're going to live four years longer than if you are in Multnomah County and one year in Clackamas County. So if you're a male, you probably want to move to Washington County because every year is worth a lot to your loved one. So interesting statistics there in this book about, a lot of good things about who we are and what we're doing. So, what, what's the name of it? It's put out by the Oregon University Extension Service.
And the Ford Foundation.
By the numbers. We're at the bottom where we need to be at the bottom, meaning unemployment and other things, and at the top where we ought to be on other things. So this is a very glowing picture of, of Washington County, by the way.
They produce it like every other year.
This is twenty-four. Till next year. Now you.
Yeah, I, I got that book last, yesterday too, and I was cruising through and it also says you're going to live four years longer if you're a woman in Washington County. Male.
Okay.
It's, it, but it also, it really is, Washington County does look great in those numbers. I was really great, I was excited to see. Busy week ahead, as everyone said. I'm really looking forward to all the meetings where all the conversations we'll embark on and District Eight and our roundtable and, but I'm really also excited for the tour of the elections. But I'm glad you initiated this, Commissioner Trace, because last time I requested, I was on the ballot, couldn't tour, so I'm really looking forward. This will be also my first time touring the elections. And yesterday, just a quick report out for AOC. I'm one of the co-chairs for AOC's Health and Human Services Steering Committee. And yesterday, we had our regular monthly meeting. It was very, it was one of the most well-attended meetings in my term as a co-chair. We had a great turnout. We met a new staff that is started to work for the Oregon Housing Community Services Department. And she shared the, their framework and what the what she's looking for is an input for OHCS's framework for county. So AOC said that they will forward to all county commissioners and chairs and judges. But I will, if they don't, I'll do it by the end of today so that Washington County has and we can provide input as needed or forward to the appropriate staff. One of the exciting presentations that we got yesterday at the Health and Human Steering, Human Services Steering Committee, was we received a report from Dan Hoover, who is a doctor with OHCU. And he talked about the statewide view of deflection. So your update, Tanya, was pretty timely. Much appreciated. And he really highlighted Washington, he highlighted four counties in terms of their approach to deflection, as we all know for Washington County. But one of the counties he highlighted was Washington County and he had really good things to say, so. What were the other four? Or who were the four? The other four were Clatsa County, Clatsa County was one. The other one was Jackson County, who also has a different way of approach. Yeah. So, but Washington County, and he highlighted the counties that were really different from each other. No, he did not highlight Marion County. So who was the fourth? Oh, I said four. He highlighted three. He highlighted three counties around that have a really ground. Jackson County was one of them and then Clatsa County and then Washington County.
He contrasted those, the, the three programs, is that what he did? Those are three really different counties.
Very different. But no, he just, he really just highlighted three counties that were somewhat different approach to each other. As you know, were very similar to Clackamas County. But one other thing I really liked is they're providing TAs and I will include you, I'll forward that. This is also another thing that OHCU staff said they'll forward it. But Tanya, I would like to include you in that forward trend so that you could get it to the staff. Because I'm not sure, I had a question about if we're utilizing the technical assistance that OHCU offers. Which is you got a grant and they're offering technical assistance. And there were fourteen counties that participated in their deflection TA. So, but it was really, it was very good. He had good things to say about our program and how and what he's learning. I'll forward the presentation, but really it's fascinating that there is a resource available, yet only fourteen counties out of the twenty-six counties that got the grant are utilizing. So more to come. From my end to follow up. I guess to-do list for me, to follow up with Tanya and the staff to figure out if we're participating in the technical assistance.
We tend to have a pretty robust burn and a pretty robust behavioral health program, unlike many other counties, so I'm not surprised with our not needing it potentially.
Yeah, fair enough. Appreciate the follow-up information. We'll look into it. I know that we are taking participating in webinars through the tech assistance. Yeah, yeah, he did mention that Washington County participated. We were the one of the counties that participated, had staff. And the, the feedback from that was really great too. So it shows that they surveyed the, the members that attended that work session, the training. And I realize that my time is up, but I'll, I'll just close with this. They assessed what the knowledge base was before they started the training and then they assessed it after and it increased. So it's very useful. It's the moral, the story of people who attended those reunions. I'll like to attend next time. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Fai. So on tomorrow is our first ever Emergency Preparedness Fair for all employees of Washington County as well as Clean Water Services. So there is a schedule that's available. All you have to do is look at horizons and figure that out. As such, I will be attending the noon to two o'clock portion of the AOC District Eight Meeting. I'll be helping staffing that. So nothing big through the AOC committees. I participate in the Public Safety Coordinating Committee, as you know, or Steering Committee, Public Safety, Justice and Veterans. Also for ledge and there was no board. I want to make sure to direct your attention in the AOC District Eight Packet. That includes proposed budget and dues information for this year. The committees are recommending a flat five percent increase and working out the numbers. This doesn't include the CFTLC information. But in my view, it will take us, given where that takes us for twenty twenty-five, it'll be approximately at that run rate, three more years before we reach the cap as Multnomah County has done. The roundtable agenda, I want to bring your attention to. We have changed the meeting time, which as Commissioner Rogers had mentioned is a little bit later. Starts at ten AM to accommodate some needs and will go through your day likely through at least four PM with the tour of the elections office. And the executive session was moved to the morning to to accommodate the needs that we have for Commissioner Willie to represent us at the CFTLC meeting. You bet, you bet. And so that's all I have for today.
And did all that, thank you for that.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So that's it for me. So as far as I know, that's it for today. We have a full set of information for our roundtable meeting on Thursday. So please come all bright-eyed and bushy-tailed and we'll go from there. Anything else? All right. And with that, we are hereby adjourned. Thank you.